Allegiance by Commissioner Darninoff. Switch it around a little bit.
In God we trust and all that means and embodies, we ask you blessing here tonight. Dear Lord God, we ask that you bless our mayor and our council, all of our city employers, employees and our first responders, the police and the fire department, all the residents, Lord. We ask, God, that you bless this meeting here tonight and that everything will be just and equitable and we'll give you all the praise and the glory for you, that you continue to bless our great city, that we continue to be known as the city of good neighbors. Amen.
We have some lengthy items in the front. Would anybody be in opposition to having the swearing in of our new commissioners brought up to the front? Is everybody okay with that? Do you have it? All right. So we'll just start off with the first presentation on the Business Expo and then if you could get me that, that'd be great. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The Hawthorne Business Expo was held on January 23rd, 2019 from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The theme was Business Networking in an Electronic World. It was sponsored by the City of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce and was free to the public. The purpose of the expo, this year and all years, is to benefit the businesses. This year, we had almost 70 businesses exhibiting their services or products and 34 from the City of Hawthorne itself. The theme was Business Networking in an Electronic World, looking at how doing business has been changed by the need to respond to an electronic world. There was a panel discussion around the theme by three business heavyweights who operate right here in Hawthorne. Mel Tang, CFO of Ring LLC, the security company, Shalom Berkman, the owner of Earth Cafe, which has specialty restaurants in the U.S. and Europe, and Michael Rito, the owner of The Lab, a movie studio operating in Hawthorne. The winners of awards were Moshi Moshi Mambo, Restaurant of the Year, Sweet Cheeks Pastries, New Business of the Year, and The Lab, Best Small Business of the Year. I think we have a video presentation. Eric? So we're going to go through this rather quickly. I just want to give you a highlight of some of the features of the Business Expo. So that was some of the businesses. That was the program. We started that first. That was Jan Vogel, who was emcee. Go back. I'm sorry. And that's Patricia Donaldson, the president, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Keep going. And that's some of us who were presenting. At that point, we were being presented awards from the state. And this is Doug Kraus, who gave a presentation. Those, that's our panel discussion. That's Mel Tang, Michael Rito. And that's all three of them. Mel Tang, Michael Rito and Shalom Berkman. That was, we were presenting awards to Michael Rito of The Lab, presenting awards to Sweet Cheeks Pastries, and an award to the, to Moshi Moshi Mambo. So now you're going to see some of the exhibits on the floor. These are some of, these are the businesses that exhibited there. There's Moshi Moshi Mambo. That's The Lab. That's their throne, which is so beautiful. That's some of the exhibitors. Thirty-four businesses from Hawthorne. We're very proud of that. We got 34 businesses. This is Sweet Cheeks Pastries. They won the award for Best New Business of the Year. That's our City of Hawthorne table. That's the Ring exhibit. These businesses, most of them that you see here are all Hawthorne businesses. And that's the committee. That's all of us who worked on this program. Thank you, Eric. I know we have a packed program, but I do want to recognize people who are here tonight, who participated in the program. And I have certificates for those who did not get a certificate at the expo and those who worked on the committee. The committee worked very diligently and I want to recognize them all. So first of all, I'm going to ask them, as I call their names, to please come up. Would somebody help me hand these certificates out?
Is anybody?
First, the first one is for the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Maybe from up there.
Okay.
Somebody can stand up.
All right. I'll stand up out here. What we'll do is we'll ask them to come up as we hand out the certificates. And then we'll take a group vote. Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Jan Vogel.
Who was the previous one? Was that the Chamber of Commerce, please?
Lisa Agbalar. Thomas Quintana. Juana Bowie. Harold Johnson. Joseph Simone. Kimberly Gomez. Bontray Norris. Ryan Richard. Michelle La Grande. Dan Blasky. I'm going to call Michael Rito up also because Michael received his award at the expo, but Michael was instrumental in helping us put the program on. He is the owner of The Lab and he also won an award for Best Small Business of the Year. So these are the people that helped put this program on, who contributed to it, who worked on it and many of whom who presented at it and who gave their heart and soul to make it a success. I want to thank them. Thank all of you.
All right, folks. I'm going to ask. All right, folks. If nobody's opposed, I'm going to bring three items up to the front. Three items, please. Actually, four. The appointment of Mr. Mohamed Awadala, President of this number 36, to serve on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. Sometimes, some of the, the reason I'm bringing them up is because sometimes some of these individuals come by, they're not able to stay for the whole meeting and we want to just make sure that they're able to go on their way, doing whatever they have to for the rest of the evening while we take care of businesses for the rest of the night. So, number 36. So, and then three other items. So let's start off with that one. I make the motion to approve.
Before you do that, can you ask if anybody would like to speak on that?
Then let me list all four of the items so that everybody who wants to speak on any of these four can speak on them. Number 36, the appointment of Mr. Mohamed Awadala, President of WSC Incorporated to serve on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board as representative of the private business sector. The other one would be appointment of Ryan Richard to the Citizens Oversight Committee, which is item 46. Number 47, appointment of Jason Caraveo to the Planning Commission. And number 48, appointment of Carol L. Maston to the Senior Commission. Would anybody like to speak? Oral communication is open for those four items that I just listed. 36. 46. 36, 46, 47 and 48. Nobody? If not, I declare oral communication closed on those four items. Item number 36, appointment of Mr. Mohamed Awadala, President of WSC Incorporated to serve on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board as representative of the private business sector. Recommended. I make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Because I'd like Mr. Mohamed to tell us what is WSC business, please.
Hello?
Yeah, hi. Mohamed Awadala, 125 Tougravilla Avenue. WSC Inc. is Westside Connection and I do constructions, home remodeling, AC and heating. I have a project on Vermont and Manchester, 300 units, and I'm doing all the air conditioning for those units.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. So it's been moved and seconded? Can we vote, please? Please vote.
Vote reflects City Council voting, Mayor and City Council voting, yes.
For the sake, Ms. Carolyn Maston, appointment of Carol Maston to the Senior Commission. She's not here. She had an emergency, but because of the urgency of filling that commission because of coming meetings, I'd like to make the motion to approve this appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting, yes.
Very good. And she'll be sworn in as soon as she's able to go into the city clerk's office. Even if it's right before the meeting, that'll still be good enough for her to qualify, to sit in on the meetings at that point. I'd like to call Ryan Richard to the podium. He's here. I'd like to make a motion appointing Mr. Ryan. Well, first of all, can you tell us what your qualifications are for the Oversight Committee, sir?
Hello. This is on? On? Yeah. Thank you all for having me here, Mayor and Honorable City Council. For the Civilian, Citizens Oversight Committee, I have a very specific, very specific vision for what it is this commission needs to do. The commission is, or the committee is charged with overseeing the spending of the Measure HH funds that have come into the city and just making sure that they are actually distributed appropriately across the city. So just to make sure that we are able to present a report that is comprehensive and clear to the community is what we're looking for, is what I look for, is being able to make sure that we can articulate this clearly and effectively to the citizens around the community.
Okay. All right. I'd like to continue with the motion for his appointment.
Second.
Please vote. All right.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to go ahead and swear you in. And we'd have one more appointment after this, so.
Ryan Richard, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
All right. Item number 47. I'd like to ask Mr. Jason Lawrence Caraveo to please come up to the podium, sir. Just want to just say something on my part. I've talked to and looked over the applications and I see that Mr. Caraveo has an extensive planning background. He's not only has studied it, he's also working, doing it. He's worked here as an intern. He's done a lot of different things. So I think he's well qualified for this position. That's why I'm nominating him. But can you tell us a little bit more why you want to do this and what benefit you feel personally that you could bring to the position?
I just wanted to start off with just a little bit of my background for those who don't know. I grew up in Hawthorne since elementary school. I went to Hawthorne High School. I graduated from Cal Poly Pomona, majored in urban and regional planning. I interned here for the City of Hawthorne. I also worked for the City of Baldwin Park, South Pasadena, and I currently work for the City of Rancho Pumas Verdes. I'm really into planning. I always wanted to be involved in my community for the City of Hawthorne and I feel like I can bring a lot of my knowledge and experience and background from the cities that I've been at to the City of Hawthorne.
Excellent. Excellent. So that's definitely why I'd like to, you know, go ahead and nominate you for this position. Anybody else have any comments or questions of him?
Well, to the man. Well, I know Jason since he was a little boy. So I saw him growing up because he was part of the Lions Club, Leo's Club. So he have got a lot of leadership about, you know, giving back to the community and we do a lot of stuff. We did cleanup. We did, you know, going to a lot of different places. So he has been very involved with the community since he was a boy. So I congratulate you on this position.
Thank you.
So I second it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, you're taking over my seat, dude. You know, I think that the Planning Commission is a very important commission. A lot of things happen, start there, you know? And it's good to get people that have a background in that that understand, you know, what's best for the city, what the people really want and, you know, try to do, you know, try to do a good job promoting the ideas and the ideals of the city, you know? I just, congratulations. I think that you've got a very good replacement. And so, welcome, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I make a motion. It's been seconded. Please vote.
Vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting, yes.
All right. Let's go ahead and swear you in. All right. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, counsel, for allowing us to do that. We'll return back to the normal schedule, which was the presentation. So thank you for those people who volunteer their time to do a good, ethical, straightforward job on these commissions and Oversight Committees, et cetera, and on the board representing us through the South Bay Whip as well. I would like to call Acting Finance Director Feliz Lopez for a presentation, which is the, this is basically the mid-year budget update. Are you ready for that? Mrs. Lopez?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Portem and counsel. I will open up the file. I don't know how well you can see it. Can you see it down on your screen, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to provide a summary of our quarterly financial report and the mid-year appropriations. If you want to just follow along here. Our revenues are at $25 million, which is 34% of our approved budget for revenues. And our expenditures are at $34.6 million, about 47.6%. Last year, at the same time, we were at 28% in revenues and 50% in expenditures. So there's been an increase in revenues and a little bit of savings in our, on the expenditure side. As we look at the revenues by category, I'll point out just a few that seem a little bit out of the ordinary. If you go over and look at the licenses and permits, you see that we're at 97%. This is mainly due to construction permit increases. We've had a lot of development in the city. The next one I'd like you to look at is our investment earnings. You can see that we've doubled our earnings in this same period from last year. That is due specifically to the investment that our city treasurer made after approval by counsel last June. He invested an additional $5.9 million. And so we can see that we've doubled our normal earnings.
Thank you to him. Thank you, Mr. City Treasurer. Thank you very much.
If we go down to vehicle license, you see that there are zero for the first half of the fiscal year. This is normal for this time of year. Our vehicle license fees come in in January and we just received a payment of about $5.2 million. So we are in line with where we should be at this time. Our intergovernmental county also has zero received. This is for a park grant that has not been spent. So once that is, once the program is spent, then we will request reimbursement for that $60,000. Again, all of the revenues are within the normal range. The next section tells us what our bank balances are. The Bank of the West general account shows $23.6 million. And our LEAF account, which is our investment fund with the state, is at $7.6 million. Multibank Securities is at $6.9 million, so total invested of $14.5.
Okay. This is kind of like an overarching question. So I guess revenues, in this case, are trailing the expenditures, but that's a normal situation at this time of year. Is it usually like this?
It's normal.
Or could it flip-flop?
It's normal and actually, at the same time last year, that number was at $13.5 million. So we've shown quite an improvement.
So at this point in time, we are trailing by a lesser amount than last year.
Than last year. Yes, correct.
Very good. Thank you. But it's, the revenue will come in heavier in the rest of the part of the year, just for clarification.
Yes. The second part of the year is when we receive most of our property taxes, vehicle license fees. Our business license fees are collected between January and March. pay Fire Services. Part of it is paid through non-departmental and part is paid by Measure HH. So that's the only reason that that shows at a higher percentage. General fund expenditures by type. We have personnel overtime is at eighty-nine percent, which is a little bit higher than And maintenance and operations, which is at sixty-three percent, and that is due to our RCC or nine-one-one communications because of the way that they bill the city. It's not on our normal fiscal billing cycle. Okay, the, the third page we'll get into is enterprise operating funds, our airport and sewer service. And that shows also that revenues are a little bit higher than the expenditures on both, but at normal levels. Any questions? And we have our mid-year appropriations changes. There are two expenditure line items where we would like to increase. In non-departmental, we'd like to increase by thirty-two thousand for emergency notification system and twenty-eight thousand in our public works department for solid waste. And also in the revenues, all of the line, all of the items that you see here have come in a little bit higher than expected. We normally project revenues pretty conservatively. You see the construction permits where we saw that ninety-seven percent in the financial report. This is where we're making our adjustment for those revenues that came in at higher And the reductions are for changes in programs.
One important point I have to make here, the two hundred and ten thousand negative, this is showing because CDBG can no longer afford our code enforcement. So because of that condition, now the two hundred and ten thousand will be a burden on general funds. So moving forward, code enforcement operation is hundred percent general fund from now on.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any questions from council members at this point?
I have a question, Mr. Shadbeer, based on what you said about the code enforcement. I'm wondering if there's a possibility that we can get some grant money for, for code enforcement activities from possibly some of the police agencies or, or-
Unfortunately, the way, I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry to say that code enforcement services no longer fit in any category because what, what federal grants are supporting is basically, this is not a policing service. Even, there are not a whole lot of grants available for police, but, except for traffic and, you know, when they do like random checking on, for, for traffic. But for, for code enforcement, unfortunately, because it is not really improvement to communities, it's just, it's considered in the eyes of administrators of those grants that it's just an enforcement. So unfortunately, they're no longer supported. Have to say, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so council member Awad is asking about the OT. That was at eighty-nine percent. And if you look at, if you show that page, Felice, that was showing it. On that same page, that, that you see eighty-nine percent for personnel overtime. If you go and look at department, for example, look at Police Department, it is at forty-six percent. So overall, even though over OT is high, close to ninety percent, but overall departmental expenses is even below fifty percent. And the reason for it is that the Police Department has sixteen vacancies. So basically, we have a lot of people in the academy right now. They are not performing. And we had two officers left us, and we had six vacancies also throughout the year. So this all add to overtime. The other aspect of it, a portion of the overtime, council is aware of the public works projects we are doing. We have a lot of night works. When you come in the morning, you see new striping, you see new paving, but when did this happen? This is when we were all in bed. So folks who work overtime, you know, this adds to the overtime, but our overtime are also being reimbursed by grants. So when the grants come, they compensate those, those impact to general fund.
Yeah, well, 'cause we had, we had the same discussion at the Public Funds Oversight Committee, and I just wanted to, you know, when everyone sees eighty-nine percent, they kinda get scared of why. So I wanted you to explain, especially, or you, Felice, to explain why it's so high. Is, is it still going to be offset?
Well, it is already offset. So council member Awad, if you look at, for example, Police Department budget, you see the offset because they are already below fifty percent. And the rea- so it is being offset by those vacancies. Those vacancies, council already approved budget to fill those vacancies. And since we were not able to fill those vacancies, therefore, that money more than offset for the overtime.
Perfect. Um, the other question I had, I remember during our oversight meeting, I think it was the Finance Department, their expenses are trending low, and it was for if they're gonna install the new system or not? Are they still planning to, or are we gonna see that excess revenue?
Uh, we are still discussing that. We would like to implement a, a new financial system because it would definitely improve the function of the department, so that hopefully within the next few months, we'll make that decision.
I think, and then, was there an update on the clerk's side of why it was trending low?
Uh, yes, they are still waiting on an invoice from the county for the prior elections.
Ah, okay.
To the chair, you done?
Yeah.
Okay. So the reason that our expenditure is a, a little bit lower than last year is due because of the position that is open? So if those positions were vacant, so our expenditure would have been higher?
Part of that and part of it, just like Councilman Awad just said, we are also, we have some projects that we were planning on, on having done by now, or at least having started, and they just haven't started yet.
And what about the retirement liability, you know, the purse increase that was supposed to starting in two thousand and nineteen?
It's already started four years ago, council member.
Uh-huh, but, but it's supposed to spike these days?
It's, it's already included.
Included, okay. Yeah. That's good, thank you.
So I see the, it's about a couple, a million and a half. So it's like a little, at this point, because of those vacancies in the Police Department, there's like a, there's a vacuum there that's being filled by the overtime. So I can see the numbers represented, that I can see the, like about one and a half to two million that we had to use the personnel overtime.
Yes.
Mostly wholly, it seems like in the, in the Police Department for that reason?
Yes, to, to, to some extent, yes.
I can see the numbers, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Ms. Lopez, Mr. Shadbeer, for your, this accounting report, keeping us on track, keeping the public informed about our finances. This is very important to us. As you know, a few years ago, we didn't get this kind of reporting, and I think this is such an improvement in our accounting practices. I wanna thank you, and I wanna also thank Councilman Awad for the Financial Oversight Committee. So I think we're, we're on the right track. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
I would like to call Neil Gaffney to the podium to talk about the emergency alert system.
Mayor, council members, city staff, I'm actually excited to be here with this tonight because I'm here in a different capacity than you see me many times previously, and I've been working for the city now for about eight months. And what I'm gonna be presenting tonight is probably something that I think has been well-needed. It's well-needed throughout many cities and counties, and we have a chance actually to put the South Bay on the map in this context of emergency notification. A little bit about background, most of you know this just from the news media, there have been some disastrous activities in seventeen and eighteen. The Tubbs and Thomas fires, the mudslides in Montecito in two thousand and seventeen, they drove some of the laws that I'm gonna reference in a moment. Of course, just recently, in the last four months, we've had activities associated with the Camp and the Woolsey fires. So we are disaster-prone in California. We have been very fortunate in Hawthorne, we're not really prone to fires and floods. We do have obviously risks associated with other activities, and we've been dodging the bullet, as has many. But at some day, at some time, the price is going to come, and we're gonna have to pay the piper. This is a way that we can at least help the community, and what's being proposed here is not just the Hawthorne community, but the South Bay community. We are vulnerable because we really don't have an alert system in place. We use Nextdoor, we use Facebook, which are systems that people reference and look at, but you've gotta be enrolled, or you've gotta be, have an account, and you've gotta be looking for the notifications. So for emergency purposes, that's not at all ideal. Meanwhile, over the last year, the legislature has moved forward on bills related to this, particularly SB eight thirty-three, which is the public alert warning bill, if you will, requires cities and counties to establish emergency alert systems by July one of this year. Eight twenty-one is a law that allows cities to automatically enroll residents into such a system and allowing them, if they choose, to opt out. The significance of eight twenty-one is that it turns, it turns a dynamic around from people having to come to us to say, "We wanna be notified," to us being able to bring them into a notification system automatically. I'll explain how that happens in a moment. We are also benefited or overseen with yet another law applicable to our area, Assembly Bill sixteen forty-six from Assemblyman Al Murtsachi, and that relates to developing an alert notification system in surrounding communities of refineries. Hawthorne, obviously, is surrounded by Torrance and El Segundo refineries. So we have mandates from the state by law that says we have to do something. So what do we have right now in LA? Nothing that really works well. There's a lot of disjointed systems. There's Code Red, there's Alert LA, there's other things that people use. Obviously, we mentioned Nextdoor and Facebook here. None of these things are really effective, and they don't communicate with each other, and they don't communicate inter-agency-wise. So Police Departments have their system, Fire Department, LA County Fire and LA City have their systems, and emergency operations in cities have their own system. So that lack of communication doesn't bode well for things in a disaster situation. All tools and applications that are out there now require a resident to opt in. They have to say, "I want a notification." At best, these things can reach maybe twenty or thirty percent of the community that chooses to opt in, but again, that's gonna eliminate, limit, limit who you reach out to when the emergency occurs. So not the best solution. Typically, information sharing doesn't occur within municipalities. If something happens in Englewood, we may not know about it. If something happens at a refinery in Torrance, we may not know about it. So again, the ability to share information is critical, and what we're gonna propose here is going to really address that issue. And a last bullet I have there about disasters, do not respect governmental boundaries, obviously, particularly in a dense area like we have here in, in the South Bay, where cities are so close, the aspect of being able to each know what each other's doing is critical. So what we're gonna propose here is something called a multi-jurisdictional notification system. It's developed by Everbridge, which is generally considered the premier application provider for crisis communications. It's a customized platform for all the South Bay cities, which is gonna allow the cities, number one, to meet legislative requirements, to eliminate the systems of the differing capabilities which function as silos, so that all have a device or a system that communicates with each other. The concept of force multiplier allows for that interoperability, so if something happens in an adjoining city, if there's a terrorist event at the Englewood Stadium in a year or two, they may not be able to have their emergency management people put out an alert. They may rely on us. We would have that capability. If something happened in Hawthorne, they could send out for us. So again, the concept of this interoperability is at the basis of what this MJNS is about. Area G comprises fourteen cities in the South Bay, so it runs from pretty much Englewood, Manhattan Beach, down south, includes Lamede, Gardena, it includes Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and so on. And when you take those cities, the opportunity to become part of this system is provided by the fact that either those cities already have an Everbridge solution, or they have a NICSO solution, which is owned by Everbridge, or they have no solution, like us, more or less, and there's no city that has to break a contract with an existing provider. So what's been proposed from Everbridge is that everybody gets on this customized solution, which is really what this is about. So how does the enrollment work? Under the state Senate Bill eight twenty-one, each city is authorized upon resolution of the city council to obtain what's called residential contact information, cell phone, landline numbers, email addresses, building addresses, through public utility contracts for emergency purposes only, cannot be used for any other intent. Once enrolled, a resident automatically will receive an emergency alert. Something happens, an earthquake, whatever it is, that alert goes out to that person, even though they don't know they're necessarily even enrolled. That allows us to reach a tremendous percentage of the population. A resident can opt out, but they would have to come to us to opt out. So in this model, they're automatically opted in, if you will. Third bullet really addresses the chance to take this beyond just the, the issue of emergency alerts into very detailed aspects of what you can do with emergencies. If a resident, once they're in the database, that we've gotten through the public utility records now, chooses to opt in further to us, we can glean more information if they are willing to provide it. It would be nice to know that perhaps somebody is living on oxygen if there was a power outage, or they can't be evacuated without a wheelchair, or a variety of things. By a resident choosing to opt in and providing additional information, we then have the ability to help them further in an emergency. So there is an opt-in process that will be built that will allow us to gain even more information for those that will choose to do it. Also, we have the last bullet that addresses, what do you do about people passing through the city? There is the ability to notify them as well. It's a little bit more of a setup process than just setting up the emergency alerts, but we do have the ability through Everbridge, Google Alerts, and the iPOS system to get the word out to people transiting through. Features, what happens is you would get a text message. So once people are enrolled through these records, emergency alert goes out, it's coming through your cell phone as a data message. Think of that as a mile wide and an inch deep. Everybody gets a message all at once. But that's not the only part. The second part is, in your text message, it will say something like, whatever message template we create, shelter in place, don't go outside, whatever it is, please type yes or type Y, indicating you've received that message. That's a really critical feature, because sometimes messages go out, people never acknowledge or they don't get it, and you don't know how many have penetrated. So this tool allows us, if we get the response, to know that person has been reached. If we don't get a response after a certain time period, thirty seconds or a minute, it then goes to the next contact point. Could be an email address, could be a landline number. Anything other than text isn't as effective because that's more like a mile deep and an inch wide. It's throttling the ability to reach those people because of the aspects of the, of the networks that things are sent through. So cell phones or text messages are always the most effective, but the point is, these things are gonna go out, people are gonna have a chance to say they've got the message- There is the ability to notify them as well. It's a little bit more of a setup process than just setting up the emergency alerts. But we do have the ability through Everbridge, Google Alerts, and the iPOS system to get the word out to people transiting through. Features, what happens is you would get a text message. So once people are enrolled through these records, emergency alert goes out, it's coming through your cellphone as a data message. Think of that as a mile wide and an inch deep. Everybody gets a message all at once. But that's not the only part. The second part is, in your text message, it will say something like, whatever message template we create, shelter in place, don't go outside, whatever it is, please type yes or type why, indicating you've received that message. That's a really critical feature, because sometimes messages go out, people never acknowledge, or they don't get it, and you don't know how many have penetrated. So this tool allows us, if we get the response, to know that person has been reached. If we don't get a response after a certain time period, thirty seconds or a minute, it then goes to the next contact point. Could be an email address, could be a landline number. Anything other than text isn't as effective, because that's more like a mile deep and an inch wide. It's throttling the ability to reach those people because of the aspects of the networks that things are sent through. So cellphones or text messages are always the most effective. But the point is, these things are going to go out, people are going to have a chance to say they've got the message, and we've alerted a tremendous amount of the community we wouldn't have otherwise. We can use notifications with lists or locations. We have unlimited messaging for emergencies and non-emergencies. We'll create a Hawthorne-branded opt-in portal, which means it'll be designed for us to go get those people, to come in and bring the other information in. It's going to be linked to severe weather alerts, which tends not to affect us as much because we don't have flooding problems, auto-translates, which means this will go out in multiple languages. Notification features, I already talked about this, going directly to smartphone, text message requires acknowledgement. It can go directly to social media platforms, Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, Twitter, you name it. Websites, city website if we want, and other types of communication devices. There are shared alerts. People in the South Bay will know about this, as we will know about theirs, so that there's collaboration on messaging, notifications, and requirements, perhaps mutual aid. Text-to-speech, so that if we sit there and type a message, it can be converted into speech. We can also do customized voice recordings as a way to alert people. And again, the ability to alert visitors exists. How will it be set up? We'll have an implementation specialist that will be provided for what they call onboarding or setup. We'll have consulting services as part of this to help develop the website, to help set up the templated messages, things of that note. Initial upload and testing of the database will occur. We'll have unlimited access to training. I think I've done four seminars through Everbridge University, incredibly helpful to help understand the emergency scenarios. Unlimited support, and if something were to happen where we wanted to send a message and somebody was not available or not capable for some disaster, their Global Operations Center can launch notifications on our behalf. So there's the redundancy aspect here. Implementation, this begins in all the South Bay cities on March one. Thirteen of the fourteen South Bay cities have signed up, Lawndale being the exclusion at this point. So we are essentially ready to go with this. The council resolution that we acquired from this council will allow us to procure the public database records. That would be something that would happen at a successive council meeting. And as soon as that database is populated, we've defined what messages, or maybe there's a standard vanilla, there's twenty templates already with messages we can choose to use, we're ready to go live. We're ready to have that emergency, if you will, and make people notified. The cost aspect of this, for all the different cities, is really predicated on the population, the number of people you will hit, and the allocated support that is eligible, which represents about a, I think it's about a sixty percent discount if we were to buy this as a single city over the counter. So our portion will be about thirty-one K on a three-year contract, so about ninety-three four hundred dollars or so. So to summarize what this is about, we know there's been problems. Other communities have experienced those problems, we've read about it in the newspaper. I happen to bring Sunday's front-page LA Times, which talks about, "In the next wildfire, seniors will be again at the most risk." Pretty important, because one of these bills says, "We have to address access and functional needs." So the AFN community has to be addressed in the context of what we do for those people. So that's going to be a piece of what we do. Obviously, the legislation is defined. Anyone with a phone is going to be enrolled. Residents can choose to opt in to provide further information. It can be used for a whole host of things that can be less than disaster, less than catastrophic, even social. Perhaps if you wanted to create a radius or polygon around where the Memorial Center is, and notify residents within a three-block radius that Prairie from El Segundo to Broadway's closed for Farmer's Market. You have the ability to even do that kind of stuff. So while it's designed for emergency purposes, the extent of what you can do here is pretty phenomenal. Multi-jurisdictional, so the pricing is predicated on all these cities contributing. If some chance Lawndale decides to contribute or participate in the next few weeks, our price would probably go down less than a thousand a year, but, you know, pretty nominally. So the price is based on what's all in right now, the thirteen cities. And we get all the functionality, support, training, and setup we need. So it's something that I wanted to make you aware of in the context of where we're going in the emergency community, something that I think is very much needed. And I'm very happy to say that we're part of the Area G effort to make this happen. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question on this, thinking, putting my disaster awareness, notification hat on. I know I took the CERT training too, so I'm kind of thinking about this in these terms. So in the case of an emergency, my question is, is this a standalone system where we acquire the data that we have, like, on our own standalone server? My concern, or not concern or question, maybe you could just clarify, is that in case of an emergency, if we're depending on a system and, say, connection to satellite or wireless, you know, streaming of data into our portal and our software system, I mean, maybe that's one of the first things that goes out, is the, you know, the towers and the towers that send out the data, et cetera. And is this a standalone where we, a system where we have the computer, the server, and all the data contained, that we can send out the information from here?
No, this does not require any hardware on our part. This is essentially cloud concept with the data, and this database will reside, which would allow us to send it out. If it doesn't, it allows the Global Center with a whole raft of redundancies to send it out on our behalf if we can't. We do own the city data, so to speak. It's not somebody else's property. But the ability to send it is not contingent upon us having a server here or somebody to send it here, because it's got the backup redundancy parts to it.
So the scenarios have been looked at ad nauseam enough to be able to feel that this is a, that's a safe protocol to have?
Right. I mean, if a cell tower goes down, it goes down for anybody trying to reach anybody.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was going to say, yeah.
So, you know, and obviously, there are landlines opportunities. So if a cell goes down and we can't send out a data or text message to that cellphone, it's going to roll to the next item, which could be an email address. If that's down, it might go to a landline. So we are overly governed by technology, and the technology having some ability to work across some of these spectrums.
All right, thank you so much.
And also portable radio, through the chair, also, as Mr. Gaffney is aware of it himself, also, we heavily rely during emergencies on portable radios, and it is actually promoted by Area G administrators.
CB, right? CB?
Yes. Because that, and also our own radio, Public Works Radio, Police Department Radio, Fire Department, because, yes, there is a huge possibility in a disaster that the cell towers get jammed, not necessarily go down, but they get jammed, or they must be used for other more important, you know, first responders, like law enforcement. Therefore, we are, like, Public Works Agencies will be heavily relying on radios.
So we get the message on what we need to be sent out through CB radio? If somehow we can't pick up a phone, or landline, or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we would be very closely joined at the hip with the police department on this effort.
Through the chair.
Neil, in order to, the information, once we agree on it, we get the information from the utility companies, correct?
Correct.
So all the telephones that...
It's waste services, it's water services, any public utility that we want to get the information from. Through a resolution you pass, we then procure. And I am not positive, there may be a very, very nominal charge for each resident's information, like five cents each, I'm trying to verify that. And that's going to give me the information that's on their record associated with you, and whatever you have in there. It could be a physical address, it could be just a phone, it could be a landline, a cellphone, an email address. That would then come to us and then be put into the database.
Is there any protection for that information not getting into the wrong hands?
It's governed by the same criteria that the FCC uses for emergency nine-eleven information. So the context is, that information cannot be used for anything but emergency purposes. Now, if you're getting into, can it be hacked? I guess anything can be hacked. I don't have that level of knowledge.
And this is predicated on a lot of cities joining in, correct?
Not predicated, all the other cities are on board.
Everybody's on board?
Well, except for Lawndale, thirteen. So what this means is, given that we have the opportunity with all these other South Bay cities to do this in a multi-jurisdictional sense, we very much have an opportunity to set the tone and the model for the county of LA and for the state of California with what we're doing here.
Yeah, okay. Who would be sending out the message? Would it be you?
Could be me, it could be the city manager, it could be the police, and we'd have to define, that's all part of the setup process that would occur between March and June.
Can you imagine what the messages would be like? What would, what do you think?
Yeah, I think they would probably be defined to various scenarios, like earthquake, like terrorist activities, obviously floods and fires, which may not affect us as much, airplane crashes. So we get to customize those messages. We'll be given a standard template of twenty, we may just like them out of the box. The sooner we do all those setup things, the sooner the system is ready to go.
And it would come through your cellphone? It would be in the form of a text?
Yes, if we have your cellphone, exactly. So if you have a cellphone and you're using a utility in the city, we're going to get your information.
If you don't have a cellphone, if you don't have a landline...
If you have a landline, we'll get that. If you don't have a landline, you have an email, we'll get that. If you don't have any of that, you're not going to get the message. You're going to have to rely on your neighbors knocking on your door. Because we're not sending the stuff out by U.S. trail.
Okay, Mayor, for a turn?
Thank you. So, thank you for the presentation. It's excellent, and you're right, it is very exciting. So the system, I have a little concern about, you just said that if citizens don't have emails, they don't have cellphones, it's going to be hard for them to get the information. And I do know people like that. So I'm wondering, is there anything that's being looked at to reach people who just don't have that kind of communication?
To be honest, no. The estimate of the cellphone penetration in the U.S. in two thousand sixteen was about fifty-one percent. It's probably higher today, it could be sixty or whatever. It's the predominant thing that people have. Landlines are now down, I believe, to less than twenty percent. So the opportunity for reaching people through that is limited. Pages are even less than that. If they have a pager, we'll put that in there as well. But it pretty much comes down to cellphones. But part of this, and what I would think we would want to do in this portal that we would create, this Hawthorne-branded emergency portal, is probably work towards the issue of helping your neighbor, so that if you have a cellphone, and you may have a couple of elderly neighbors who don't have technology, don't have cellphones, you know, we ask the community to be aware of that and to essentially help them by knocking on the door and saying, "Evacuate," or "Shelter," or whatever it might be. We would have to determine if we want to do that. But that's part of, I think, a grander scheme of the community beyond just the notification process through electronic means.
So just walk us through what would happen. So a disaster occurs. Who decides it's a disaster and requires notification to everybody? Who makes that decision?
That would really be the city manager.
Okay.
I mean, it could be the mayor, I mean, it could be the council, but generally, that would roll to the city manager's responsibility. So when that happens, both messaging and the other half of the equation, the Emergency Operations Center would stand up, we would have that staff with city people to handle a variety of things, very closely aligned with what's called a dock, the Department Operating Center, which is over across the street with the Police Department. And we would then begin assessing the situation. Most cases, those situations are going to be across borders. So they'll involve our neighbors, Englewood close by, Gardena, maybe the beach cities. So we're going to be working together on this, and that's part of what this system is offering, this kind of multi-jurisdictional exchange of information, which will include, through the working groups that will be established, the police and the fire. So police, obviously, because we have a police department. But LA County would be at the table, so that we're communicating together. So that may not happen in two or three months with the working group. That's an evolving process that will likely occur. So it's a crawl before you walk. You've got to be able to get the information. You can't rely on people to opt in, because they're not going to tend to do that. Opt-in data, if I recall, is less than twenty percent in the best of communities, which is to say, you go out, you ask people to give us your information, and a lot of community people don't respond. They don't trust governmental entities, they don't want their information out there, whatever it is. But at the same token, if you only got twenty percent of the people who know about it, and you live in Paradise, California, you know what happens. So, you know, we're doing what we believe to be the right thing, and the state, as soon as you got to do it.
Is there any tutoring or training for the community so that people will know what to see, what they'll see on their cellphone? Because I know I get a lot of things on my cellphone.
Yeah.
And I don't know if...
I wouldn't call it tutoring. I would say, we would put information out there about the emergency alert system through this, let's call it Emergency Portal, that we create, which will talk about what to expect, what the messages might look like. By the way, we probably incorporate the TV station into this as well. But that's also going to be a pitch to help us gain information, because we do want to know about the people who are disabled, who can't get around, who might need to be evacuated before whatever, or the two, mother and dad, or a single parent who has three kids at home from three to six P.M. without anybody, you know. That kind of information becomes the additional benefit beyond just having a phone number. But having the phone number is the first step, and that's what we want to go after. So really, what I want to leave you with is a charge for you as the council to take a look at adding this resolution, as are the other city councils in the other thirteen or twelve cities, who will be enacting the resolution to secure this resident data from the utility databases. Because without that, we don't go anywhere.
Thank you.
Councilmember Watt?
Thank you, Mayor. So you, first off, thank you for the presentation. This is going to be, as you mentioned, a bigger focus, especially when there's more wildfires coming up, earthquakes and things of that nature. I know I spent a lot of time with our city manager discussing emergency preparedness. And I got to see this program in motion a week ago. I went out to New Orleans to sit down with their emergency preparedness center, and they didn't have one when Katrina hit. So that's why I wanted to go out there and study, is they, they're kind of, they were like us. They had one person and maybe a staffer. And then when Katrina hit, the whole city was just upside down, and that's why there was no, that's why they're getting so much criticism, not helping, is because they weren't ready for it. No one is ever ready for something of that nature. But as you read that article mentioning that, you know, the next senior citizens are going to be the next ones kind of hurt in these fires, we recently had one of the apartment complexes here in Hawthorne go up in fire, and we weren't really ready as well either, not to the full extent that we could. And the director has a background in Hawthorne, and mentioned that, you know, as our airport starts to get busier, especially because of the stadium, as SpaceX and Tesla continue to grow, our emergency preparedness department does need to grow just as fast, because we're going to be a bigger target compared to the rest of the South Bay regions, because of everything moving in. So I am happy that you're the person in charge of it now, because he did mention it's not an easy task. The other thing that he did mention was, they have a thing called NOAA Ready, which is N-O-Ready, so New Orleans Ready. It's their marketing program for Everbridge and anything emergency preparedness. So they developed their own personalized marketing campaign to address to the residents what to do, you know, where to get information, how much food you should have in the house, and there's strategic placed as well throughout the cities at different bus stops, so that, say, if you're caught in the middle of a city, and you're not getting the message because the cell tower is down, whatever the case might be, at the bus stop, they'll see exactly what to do and who to contact if they can't have any cell service or anything like that.
There's a lot of outreach we can do to the community to start, to stage that kind of stuff, too. And the city manager and I have begun talking about that.
Oh, wonderful. It's going to get intense, but I'm excited for it.
I would be happy to take this offline and talk with you in New Orleans about it.
Oh, we want, well, I was actually going to mention, I have the context, so we can also go about that. But yeah, great presentation. I wanted to talk to you more about this, and can't wait.
Hey, I'm loving doing this. As I told all of you, it's a new kind of career field for me, and it's actually pretty exciting. And as I've said to a number of people, if I was a younger person advocating for, you know, a career path, this is actually a very interesting career path, you know. You prepare for stuff that may never happen, you know, who knows when the next earthquake? And I'm aligned for Hawthorne under earthquakes, airport disasters, train derailments, not fires, not floods, terrorist activity, you know. So those are the categories of things that I'm looking at in the disaster world, so to speak.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Watt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watt, for representing us over there.
Through the chair.
We have one more question here?
I was going to make a...
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Neil Gaffney, for the presentation. My question, you said, this thing is ready to start on March first, right?
Right.
So is this enough time for you guys to get all that data from the utility company?
The program begins March one, which means setting up the databases, beginning to write the templates, to talk about putting the portal together, try and get people to opt in. The stuff really should be ready by July one. We're not really behind anybody. We're not really behind anybody. There have been some of the cities in the South Bay that already have Everbridge or Nixal, so they've got some information populated by people who have opted into those. So they've got maybe a slight head start. But this is pretty much, each city starts, Torrance has probably got the biggest head start on March one, and based upon the timeline for implementation and the supporting services, I've been assured that we should be able to do this in about three to four months. But again, I can't begin, well, I can, but I can't begin the concept of testing or doing anything until I have the database. So again, that really is on your lap.
So that database, so when you got, when you're gonna get the database, so we're gonna give you a percentage of the population of the city of Hawthorne that have that cell phone, so automatically you will go on the mode of trying to reach out to the other people?
Right, so if, for example, you're the rate payer for your water company, we get your address, your email and your phone, we're not gonna know whether you have a spouse who might be in the household, who might be at a different phone, a different phone number, so we're gonna try and get more. But what we get will be a better start than anything we can do. So again, when we can get that opportunity to opt in, and perhaps you have young children who have cellphones, again, it's for emergency only, we're not marketing this stuff. The more information we get, the more people we'll reach out to.
Because when we did the search program, you know how they encourage us to go back to our community and map the community, to see all the resources that we have around us? So if there is a disaster, we know who is the nurse, who is a plumber. So those kind of things in mind for this system when it comes to line?
Well, if you're talking about the M Y N Map Your Neighborhood Program, that's actually a separate thing I've been looking at. Olivia had encouraged me to do that about a month ago. I've looked at the program. That program actually cost a little bit of money, not a lot, to begin to do it. The attempts to do that in the past, based upon other people that have tried it, are somewhat iffy in that people don't really want their neighbors in their house. So I need to find different ways to do that. Maybe the Memorial Center becomes the venue to try and bring in this four-square-block group of residents to try and do it. It loses the personal appeal of sitting in somebody's living room, but it may work. You know, I haven't tried it yet.
So basically, the system is going to operate like the Amber Alert system that we have through the state of California?
The Amber Alert falls into another series of alert notifications. There's all kinds of hierarchies that I've learned about. The I-Pause, which is the Integrated Public Alert Warning System, and then there's the Wireless Emergency Alerts. So all of these things have different processes or techniques. We, by the way, by virtue of becoming part of this solution, allows us to apply for an I-Pause authorization, which would allow us to send an I-Pause alert, which is like an Amber Alert. So Amber Alerts has three categories: emergencies, child abduction kind of things, and then presidential notifications. So, and we had a presidential notification in October. Everybody's phone should have got a message October third, or whatever day it was. But that's what I-Pause is, we can't just do that as a city. We can do that with this application by receiving an authorization of doing this, which is just another way to reach out to people.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Right. Thank you, Council, we need a, well...
Chair, I just wanna make one point, that you know what we are going with this. This is a Senate bill, this is a mandate, what Neil was just talking about, we have to do this. This is why it is item number twenty-nine on the agenda tonight. And then also, the whole laundry list of other mandates are coming. Climate change, disaster preparedness is coming. We are not in El Nino season, but believe it or not, last week in that rainfall, we had numerous flooding in different locations, even in Hawthorne. So this is all going to be translated into dollar. So be prepared for the budget when it comes. This is all gonna, you know, translate into cost for us. You know, we have to provide temporary shelters during disasters. We already entered into a contract with Red Cross, so there are a laundry list of actions we have to take, and they are going to cost us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. All right. Can you please read the guidelines for oral communications?
Any person deciding to address the city council should complete a speaker request card and submit the card to the city clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. After obtaining permission to proceed by the president officer, a speaker should first state their full name and address for the record. They then shall state their business for all governing bodies briefly and completely, and unless granted further time by a governing body, shall limit their address to three minutes. The three-minute limit shall include governing body or staff responses to queries posed by speakers. However, the state open meetings law prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda posted seventy-two hours before a regular meeting and twenty-four hours before a special meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the governing bodies as a body and not to any particular member thereof. The governing body may either dispose of the communication at the closed door of, or may refer to an appropriate administrative officer for a study, investigation, report, annual recommendation. Discussion, if any, shall be by members of the governing body only. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the city council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the city clerk's office during normal business hours.
Francisco Sanchez?
Well, this is unfamiliar. Okay. You're familiar with the reason I'm here, for parking. I came already to talk with the right people, and they've been ignoring. I went to the city of Redondo Beach to take pictures. I provided the picture that what we're looking for is to have double parking in some streets, especially in York, Mellow, and Oxford. And we have the width capacity to have parking both sides, and have space for emergency vehicles. Well, they ignored me. Even one of them, I don't know his name, he was on the presentation, he laughed on me, and he gave me some numbers that, he said that to do this is gonna cost a half a million dollars. And I told him, I said, I know about cost of the construction, and this is not gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars for this project. Well, I haven't heard anything from them. And it didn't allow me to explain, I have been talking, I've been trying to talk with the supervisor to that department, to make sure that they have this in the agenda, and they say that before I have to talk in front of you and request the money for. How can I ask for money if they don't give me the specific number they need? This is a situation where I see right behind you, the city of Good Neighbor, trying to park right now, and you're not gonna be a good neighbor. You have an everyday confrontation for parking space in this area. I sent an alert ten years ago. Previous administration didn't do anything about it. Now, I highly respect all of you, and I hope you do something about it. Okay, I do appreciate you do that. It's time to do it. I mean, ten years, been waiting for. I already explained personally to Alex, the young kids, now they're young adults, and many of them are still living with the parents, and they have their own car. The population of cars increase in a higher number. Right now, when I leave this room, I'm going to find where to park, and I may have to park five blocks away from where I live. I think that is not a situation that you can overlook of it. It's a situation that you have to face and say, yes, this is a situation that the city has a problem with, and we have to do something about it. For the sake of the name, the city of Good Neighbor, and you just said something, sir. You says that you are here to give us what we want. Well, this is not something that we want, it's something that we need. Okay, thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And I did meet with you, showed you around, so I want to find out maybe if some of those people haven't responded to you, after you left and you did some of your own investigation? Maybe we could just figure out...
There is no solution, there is a reason for it, Mayor, that it took ten years and nothing happened. I have also more bad news, there are, we keep receiving applications that people are converting their garages to rental units with no parking whatsoever. This gentleman that just spoke, he has five cars and one garage. Five cars. How can you find a parking space? I cannot find where I live, I cannot live with five cars. There is no solution for it.
To the check, I say a quick thing. To that gentleman, I'm in process to come up with a plan, okay? And I'll let, the council don't know, but I'm talking with some company called Smart Parking Technology. So we are doing something about it, because I know parking has been an issue for twenty years, okay? So we're going to do something about it. So keep, you know, be patient, please.
No, you can, you can, just a one-time approach.
Because what he said is what I just mentioned, what he repeated what I said, when I said that the young kids, that my young adults are delivering the house, you keep that?
All right, well, you know, look, let me, I really appreciate you being our neighbor, my parents' neighbor and everything, and my parents live on the same street you do. And we, this is a compounded problem that's even being made worse by our state government, plain and simple, our state government that people here are electing. So, first of all, we had a scourge of apartments that were being built. That was the first thing. We were single-family residences into the fifties. Pastor Kokas grew up here, he knows that. And all the apartments started getting built. And then people, administrations, administrations, finally this last election, we cleaned up the mess and dynamic that we had on the council that wanted to build apartment after apartment. So this is the first opportunity, actually, this January, that we got this new assembly of people here on the council that are resistant to the overbuilding of things. That's something we can't deny. But then on top of that, what's being compounded, I'm gonna finish up real quick, I promise. It's the cultural thing that you said, people are living at home because of financial economic reasons. I don't know, your own family, my family, people down the street, it's being compounded because of cultural reasons. And some people want to live there, and they want to have their, we can't deny them the ownership of a car. So even worse now, sir, is that our state government is formally allowing people to build living residences in their garages. They're saying that it's okay, and that they're gonna say that you have to allow for them to build conversions in their garages. So, we can get ahead of it just a bit, maybe not that, if we do what you say, that's what, we could get ahead of it just a bit. But it's even gonna be compounded even further with what our state government is doing. So, if anything, pay attention who you vote for in the state government, we're gonna try to see what our colleague here has, and he's gonna share it with us, but this situation in Hawthorne took forty years to make. Forty years to be where we're at. So trying to come up with a solution in a couple weeks, a couple months, a couple years, even ten years to reverse the thirty or forty years of this mess, we're gonna try. We're gonna try really hard to do that for you. You have our commitment that we're gonna try, but this is the current against where we're going, so if you could just, you know, you know, allow for us.
Just a reminder, during oral communications, it's the time for the public to speak, it's not a time for council members to respond, other than maybe a ten-second request to the city manager to place it on the agenda for the future.
Thank you, it's just a passionate subject for all of us, because we all feel the pain with you. All right, so, thank you, sir, though, for coming up again, gracias. Richard Badisher? And if you could, if you could correct me, sir?
That's fine.
That'd be great.
Good morning, good afternoon. Evening, actually. I personally am a citizen of the United States, as we are, and work with a lot of different ethnicity. My problem is, is I reside over here, not too far, at the apartments across the street from the pool, city pool. At one time, we were allowed to park our cars, people that had like, and as you're aware of, the situation of kids living with their parents and all. If you have a one, or it used to be if you had a two-bedroom apartment, you could have parked two cars in the basement garage. If you have a studio apartment, you're only allowed one car. As you're aware of, a lot of kids are living with their parents. Parents have a car, kids have a car, two-car families. Just recently, I've been at this residence for approximately four years. We used to be able to park across the pool, no problem. Then they made it where if you left your car there overnight, or you parked in the pool, you got a ticket. Then, and after that happened, you used to be able to park your car over there on Broadway in Inglewood. I'm not sure, I know it's Inglewood, and I'm not sure what the last street is. No problem. The residents of that neighborhood, and I looked on the city map, that technically we are all neighbors, because it's all the same area. I feel, and I have a petition, I spent about, I don't know, two hours, I almost have one page done. I feel that the fact is, is that we all pay taxes. I pay mine. I pay, make sure my automobile DMV is paid up. I know when you buy gas, taxes are taken out of that for street and all that other noise. I would like to ask the city council to help us relieve, as you say, good neighbors. I would like to discuss, or if possible, a solution that is equitable for everybody. I've talked to all these people. I had one guy laugh at it, because I went and got the petition that got it all done. I had a couple people read it, and they were like, this is what happened? I do not believe that it was done in a proper way. I think they falsified the reason why, just so they could get their way. And I also believe that the lady that did it had an insight with one of the hostile and governing people.
So can you just tell us what you would like for us to do?
Okay, I have a solution.
But just like a real quick, because the time's up, just give us like a...
Where we would like to be able to park is permitted. You have to have a permit, but you drive, bring your driver's license in, get a permit, it's ten dollars, okay? We're not talking about the homeowners themselves. Let them have their driveways, let them have their space. It's right behind the Hawthorne where the field meets, okay? To maybe, to where the football field is, to Inglewood. Allow us to pay the ten-dollar fee for that permit. Other solution, just where that area is, remove the signs. Now, I do know, because I'm a truck driver, I know traffic laws and all, that a car cannot stay in the same spot more than the seventy-two-hour parking period. Okay? That's about the only thing I've discussed with these people I've been talking to.
Can you just give them the form, just so he can outline what his ideas, sir, Mr. City Manager? He can outline that, and we can take a look, see if that's a possibility. Thank you, sir, thank you for coming up. All right, so, thank you, sir. Pat Donaldson? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to just mention something about when, that you were talking about disasters. And just last week, Dr. Lucy Jones, who everyone knows, who's on TV every time there's an earthquake or disaster, said that eighty percent of Californians are not prepared for a major earthquake, and less prepared than the Northridge earthquake. So next city council meeting, I'm gonna bring some paperwork for everyone, and they can put it on, I don't know, TV or whatever, about what is needed in a disaster, or what you need before something happens, what you need at your house or your apartment. So anyways, March seventh is our State of the City, and that's gonna be at the Memorial Center, the Hawthorne Memorial Center, and registration is at eleven A M. Photo op with the mayor is at eleven-thirty, make sure you're there, Mayor. Take, you know, people want to take pictures with you. And the program starts at twelve noon. And we also have confirmed a celebrity coming, and then we have someone else that's very well-known all over the world... And we also have confirmed a celebrity coming, and then we have someone else that's very well-known all over the world that's supposed to be coming also. So make sure you get your tickets, or you get your tables, thank you, March seventh, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the council, please form a line? Please identify yourself and form a line, just so we know who's gonna speak, and we have an idea how long this is gonna take. Alright, go ahead, Mr. Arnie.
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, to Neil Gaffey is, for your information, CBs do not exist anymore. I know, I've been a licensed hand since the ninety-two riots, and the previous disasters, the Northridge earthquake, the, during Hurricane Andrew, the wildfires we've had previously, Malibu, back in the, before the major one here. I've, I'm what they so-called, one of the first responders, that I don't, I go out, with the funds I have, I go out and respond to most of the disasters out of state, my own, the money, the funds out of my own pocket. I don't, I don't use anybody else's funds. I was, when the Northridge earthquake hit, I've, I assisted most of the seniors here in Longdale, that, we knew that Longdale and Hawthorne, I made sure that they were, were able, weren't, they were bedridden, or other things that I assisted in. I went out to Northridge to assist with the Northridge matters that went from three stories to two. I was assisting the Northridge PD with the watcher of the side apartments that was next to the apartment that was condemned. I was shocked that the response I got from the neighbors in that neighborhood, I did belong to react for many years in Long Beach. And I do assist with whatever disasters there are. I, most people don't know that the radio that's on my hip is a ham, is a ham radio, and most people think it's related to the city, and it's, no, it's not related to the city. The city does have a ham station here in the basement of City Hall, that's run by the DP, run by the Sheriff's Department Volunteer Services, that nobody knows about.
We know what you're talking about.
I'm not, I don't, I don't belong to that organization, but I've, I've had a lot of people come up to me and ask, how do you get involved in that? It's a three-day weekend course, it's, it's a lot of fun, if to see, would I like to get involved in it? I can get some people out to do amateur demonstration, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Alright, let's get on to business. Thank you, everybody, for coming and expressing your passions, your concerns, the things that you like that we are doing, good for you. So the positives, the concerns, et cetera, thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I have nine items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item number eight, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting of January twenty-second, twenty-nineteen. Item number nine, approval of the waiver of readings of resos and ordinance on tonight's agenda. Item number ten, the city treasurer requests the approval of the warrants. Item number thirteen, resolution number eighty-twenty-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving a site letter agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, amending the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association. It's for part-time employees. Item number fourteen, resolution number eighty-forty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the city manager to execute a corporate agreement between the city of Hawthorne and the city of Gardena regarding paratransit services, ratifying services for fiscal years twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, and twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and approving services for fiscal years twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Item sixteen, resolution number eighty-forty-seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, electing to be exempt from the congestion management program. Item number seventeen, resolution number eighty-forty-eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the first amendment to employment agreement for the interim city manager contract for clarification purposes. Item number eighteen has been pulled at this time. Item number nineteen, resolution number eighty-fifty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of February twenty-nineteen as Black History Month for adoption.
I make a motion.
Um, I'd like to pull number nineteen, for a slight, for a very short discussion.
Okay, I make a motion on all items, with the exception of nineteen. It's been moved to second, and please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting, yes?
Item nineteen for discussion, Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, yes, so I want to congratulate, congratulate the city for, for this resolution, but I want to make a slight change to say, February, instead of February twenty-nineteen as Black History Month, February as Black History Month, leave out the twenty-nineteen, so that all Februaries will be considered Black History Month. So it will be, so it will be celebrated every year, not just this year.
Can we do that?
That's fine.
Alright.
That's my interlineation.
So you have, make a motion?
I move that, with the, with the interlineation, that that be changed, that it become February as Black History Month.
It's moved by, moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, and seconded by Councilmember Montero, please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting, yes?
Item twenty?
Now is the time in place for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the franchise agreement between Allied Waste Services of North America and the city of Hawthorne. This amendment will affect the rates allied charges to its customers in the city for solid waste and recyclable collection, and for other services. City clerk's department declaration publication filed, no reading communications were received.
Is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic? Anyone? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this topic closed, ordered. Resolution number eighty-four-five, miss?
Uh, the resolution...
Uh, we're going, she has to read it before we discuss it.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, but she has to do that first, go ahead.
Resolution number eighty-four-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the amendment of the solid waste franchise agreement between the city and Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, and authorizing the interim city manager to execute a third amendment and restated franchise agreement for adoption.
Councilmember Tayeda, discussion, sir? We, Councilmember Tayeda, go ahead to discuss.
Well, I'd like to understand a little bit, I thought Republic used to be the contractor, and then there's issues regarding when people leave furniture, big stuff outside their buildings, which sometimes is, people complain about that a lot. Now, what's exactly the procedure for that? If my understanding is correct, now there's, it's unlimited? No, or am I misunderstanding something?
Okay, so, I don't know, in order to address this more accurately, yes, unfortunately, Councilmember Tayeda, the apartment owners who leave somewhere else, they are not Hawthorne residents. Unfortunately, yes, they have been, it's a longstanding issue in this city, that they are just putting stuff out, and Republic or Allied Services, we had a bucket item pickup in the contract to pick them up. So it's constantly throughout the year, four days a week, they are picking up these items, and normally during weekend, they come and they put more, and, you know, weekend starts again with more. So, we are going to somehow mitigate this bad behavior, unfortunately, that we are facing and have been struggling with it. This is costly, we are talking about two-hundred-and-fifty tons of bucket item pickup, illegal dumping in our city by apartment owners who don't live in this city. So, is, is contract what it is doing, basically? We are increasing the number of legal bucket item pickup from two per year to four times a year. That is unheard of, because you can barely see in surrounding neighborhoods, one bucket item pickup a year, or two. This is four per year, and in each pickup, it is up to five bucket items, which is quite, quite a number of bucket items and improvements, it's all free of charge to residents. Also, for apartment owners and multi-unit owners, we are going to provide free twenty times per year bucket item pickup in our agreement, in our new agreement, for apartment owners. Hopefully, we can, you know, reach out and motivate them to do this legal approach, legal approach, meaning that when they call Republic for pickup service, that bucket item doesn't have to sit on the sidewalk for a few days. So hopefully, they cooperate. The other aspect of this contract is, you know, trash companies face something so-called, it's called China Sort, which basically China is not accepting recyclables, recycled materials, they're not accepting from US anymore. So, they have been struggling with this. In our negotiation with Republic, their first measure was to increase rates. We were able to negotiate this item, and city is picking up the slack by paying for city facility services, which has been for free for twenty-seven months. That hopefully, within this twenty-seven months, and city pays for those services, you know, market can get adjusted, and, and solutions can be found to, to, basically, you know, offset the cost. The other item before you in this franchise amendment is the CPI, how the CPI is being calculated. So far, CPI has been calculated based on the Consumer Price Index, and also Producer Price Index, which is gasoline cost, and also tipping fee or dump fees. So we are going to do away with it, streamline it, make it more simple, by using another subcategory of consumer pricing, it's called water, trash, and sewer. So it is just one index adjustment in lieu of more complicated computations.
Okay, Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this is pretty good. Thank you, Arnie, and thank you, Doc Kraus, and also I want to acknowledge, you know, Don Harris from the Republic, because I met with her in December. So I asked for ten free pickup for the apartment owner, and then they came up with twenty. So, so thank you very much for that, because currently, the apartment owner has to pay for the bulk pickups, if they had, you know. So they don't tell the tenants, right? So the tenants just, when they leave the apartment, they just put stink on the street, and the apartment owner never calls the Republic to come pick up those bulk items, because they have to pay fifty dollars for each pickup, correct? But right now, so we're gonna offer them twenty pickup, free pickup a year, so starting July first, twenty-nineteen. So my goal is, we'll reach out to those apartment owners and property managers, educate them on this new deal, that we're giving them these freebies, because we want to clean up Hawthorne, we don't want to see those bulk items, you know, sitting down on the street, on the sidewalk for many weeks. So, thank you again, Arnie, Doc, and Don Harris, for, you know, make my day, thank you.
Yeah, they made my day too, they have been good partners with us throughout these years, so we are happy that we can cooperate together, continue to cooperate and resolve the issues.
Through the chair.
Yeah, let me, a real quick question? No, absolutely. In tandem, Mr. City Attorney, now that Republic Services is being so generous with their pickups, now there wouldn't be an excuse, any excuse for the apartment owners to call in and keep their properties, keep their properties nice and clean? Just like we hold all the residents, like they overgrow their grass, they park a car front, or they have like some trash, code enforcement has the ability to go cite them. Mr. City Attorney, can you please, with the legal confidential, tell us, draft up something, the viability of penalizing them? If they don't, if they keep their properties, like, with all these bulky items, and that they don't call in with the adequate amount of time? If they just, like a blight fee, just like we apply the blight fee to the owners of the Hawthorne Mall? I think all the rest of the apartment owners should be held liable too, just like we hold the residents liable, right? So, can you just take a look at that?
The, the change to the franchise agreement does limit the number of bulky item pickups to twenty, it's not unlimited. So there still may be a lot of occasions where these bulky items are...
Absolutely, but they'll still be held liable, so maybe they should start looking at who they're renting out their apartments to.
It's always gonna be an evidentiary problem.
They should start looking at who they're renting their apartment, if they're doing that, they're probably trashing up their apartments, so, it's a win-win situation for them.
Further clarified, currently, there is no bucket pickup item for apartments or multi-units. This is for the first time we are establishing bucket pickup item, and, and this is for free up to twenty.
I understand.
However, illegal dumping, you know, we had it in our contract that, you know, Republic is doing their best.
Well, if somebody's putting something on one of the residents' lawn, you know, I didn't put it there, somebody put it there, or I didn't do this, so it's like, so, I mean, that's the same argument, but they're held liable.
Yeah, nobody wants to take credit for the couch in front of the...
Yeah, exactly, so I think, I think we should still pursue this, because it's, it's the right thing to do. I mean, that's, and we now, yeah, there's so much generosity with these twenty pickups, and then anything on top of that, you know.
Can I say something quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, actually, my goal is, by, by spring, sometime in April, I'm gonna do a townhouse, a town hall meeting with the all apartment owner and property managers, with the help with Allied Waste, with the West Basement Water and Edison, to educate them in all these new policies, especially the trash pickup, this twenty pickup a year that they're gonna have after July first. Because right now, like I said, they have to pay fifty dollars for each time they call, but, so they don't do that, because they don't want the property manager to call, so they can pay more, more money during the trash bill. So we're going to have to educate not just the apartment owners and the property manager, but also the residents. So I'm on that, that we're going to do a public relation campaign, that because we need to clean up this city and the may is right, the apartment owners have to take some responsibility, and we're gonna, we're gonna make them accountable.
Let's have that ready, in time for that council meeting, for that town hall. Let's, because, yeah, she was next.
Okay, I just had a quick question about the, the twenty items per, twenty bulky pickups per year. In each pickup of the twenty, how many pieces can be in that one pickup?
Oh, that's a good one. It's twenty-piece, so it's a, for apartments, it's twenty items.
Per?
Per year.
Per year.
So each pickup of the twenty, each pickup is just one item?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because, for example, in Torrance, it was only one item per year.
Okay, so it could...
This is twenty per year, so comparing with Torrance, this is twenty times more.
But I'm saying, okay, so for example, if, if there's a, if there's a dumping of a sofa and a couch, only, only one of those is considered in the twenty?
So each pickup, each pickup can go up to four items.
That's what I meant, okay, okay.
Okay, that's a good clarification.
Yeah, but cumulatively twenty, not twenty times four, eighty, okay? Cumulatively twenty.
Oh my god, no. That's not, that isn't so, right?
That's different changes.
And this is twenty, and this is twenty times, this is twenty times more than Torrance. If you want to go to Torrance, you can get only one.
Okay, so it's twenty total, okay.
Okay, that sounds cool, alright, okay. Sorry about that, Nan.
No, no, that was basically it, if you put your living room out in the...
Some dandy, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was that the question? Alright, guys, thank you so much, everyone, where are we at? Do we have to do, what resolution? Okay, okay, I make a motion?
Vote reflects Mayor and City Council members voting, yes?
You have four ordinances, can you read the twenty-two through twenty-five?
Ordinance number twenty-one sixty-nine, first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California... enacting chapter nine point three-three unnecessary nuisance noise, repealing chapter nine point three-four unnecessary noise, enacting nine, nine point three-four noise ordinance, repealing chapter nine point three-five disturbing caused by loud unnecessary and unusual noise, enacting chapter nine point three-five architectural acoustics, repealing chapter nine point three-six soundtrack, enacting chapter nine point three-six vibration ordinance, and enacting chapter nine point three-seven reserve of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. For introduction?
Uh, I move to introduce. Okay, so there's, there's no more action needed. Twenty-three, please.
Ordinance number twenty-one seventy-one, first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending and renaming chapter five point seven, five point five-seven, vending from motor vehicles of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and enacting chapter five point five-seven, a sidewalk vending of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. For introduction?
I move to introduce. Um, I'm pretty sure we'll have a lengthy discussion at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Ordinance number twenty-one seventy-two, first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adding section two point oh-six, point oh-two-five, mayor pro tem to chapter two, city council of title, title two, administration, civil service, and personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, related to appointment and term of mayor pro tem. For introduction?
Um, I'll introduce, but there's a small just, uh, comment. Go ahead.
Me?
You wanted to pull twenty-four?
No, no, leave it. Next time.
Okay. Okay, this is for introduction. I think we're good.
Next time.
We're just comments and everything. We'll add at the next one. And maybe we just vote some of these down. Okay, twenty-five, please.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-one seventy-three, first reading, an ordinance of the.
Uh, I move to introduce twenty-four. I didn't say that, I don't think. Okay, so I move to introduce twenty-four. So go ahead with twenty-five, please.
Ordinance number twenty-one seventy-three, first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending Hawthorne Municipal Code Title Two, Administration, Civil Service, and Personnel, Chapter two point two-two Park Recreation and Fine Arts Commission, Section two point twenty-two, point one thirty, sidewalk roaming vendors in city parks. For introduction?
Anyone else want to introduce this one?
I introduce.
Okay, so it's like spread up, spread the love out. Okay, twenty-six?
Urgency ordinance number twenty-one seventy-four, an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending and renaming chapter five point five-seven, vending from motor vehicles of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, and enacting chapter five point five-seven, a sidewalk vending of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, and declaring the urgency thereof for adoption.
Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney. Can you summarize this?
Uh, yes, this, uh, this is an urgency ordinance, so it requires four fifths vote. And this, uh, ordinance basically just implements, uh, SB nine forty-six, which mandates that, that cities allow sidewalk vendors in our city. Uh, prior to this, the city has always prohibited sidewalk vendors in our city. Now they are allowed to sell their goods on sidewalks, on any public property, including parks. However, before they do so, they need to get a permit from the city, a business license from the city. They need to get a seller's permit. They also need to get a clearance from the health department and a food handler's permit. Uh, so they will be allowed to sell on Inglewood Avenue, Rosecrans, even in residential areas as well.
So whose genius idea in Sacramento was this?
Yes.
Whose harebrained scheme was this?
This is Senate and Assembly, and, uh, the governor signed it.
They have no clue that, what the heck we're going through in this, down here? Are they like in a hole or something up there?
Yes.
It's like, what, they just go to enjoy their time up there and see how many, challenge themselves to see how many bills they can pass for fun?
Yep.
This is idiot, this is idiocy right here. So I don't even know how to treat these guys, because I really not even enthusiastic about it.
Well, through the chair, actually, you know, this is what I wanted to, Russell to explain, because it's a mandate that the state have put to us, that we have to allow these things to happen. Because I know in the past, we were again, any of those, you know, street vendors, you know. So now, they can go ahead and ask the permission from the landlord to be on there, and then, like Russell said, get the, get this licensing and the permit, the clearance from the health department, they can be selling things in your neighborhood in a few weeks, a few months. Because this was the state mandate that it was supposed to be done on January first, twenty nineteen. So it took effect, so.
What's, what's the?
Through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a concern, but I think, you know, I think based on the, the, um, based on the wording, it looks like my concern has been met, but, in the ordinance, but, um, I have a couple of concerns. I want to make sure that, first of all, that the vendors comply with county health laws. And I believe, uh, Mr. City Attorney, that our permitting process requires that they comply with health laws. Is that not correct?
Uh, yes, when they come to fill out their application, they have to show that they already received that clearance from the health department.
And I also have a concern that they not block the streets, uh, prohibiting, um, or, or limiting pedestrian access to the street. And I think the ordinance also addresses that. Is that not correct?
Uh, yes, Sacramento was kind enough to give cities the ability to regulate time, place, and manner.
Okay.
Oh, that's awesome. Oh, wow.
But, but, but the, the problem is that, you know, that it, because some of it will be left to judgment, if, if there are too many, if there are too many vendors on a street, um, if we decide there are too many on the street, we can't change that. Is that correct? So our streets could become ugly and crowded looking with these vendors.
Uh, yes, uh, there have been attempts in the past to control the number and the distance from businesses, and that has been, uh, struck down by the courts. That's probably why this particular legislation does not allow cities to regulate how many vendors are on the street, or whether or not a business likes them or not like them in front of their business.
And I have a particular concern, because our streets are small, narrow, in terms of Hawthorne Boulevard, Inglewood, and those streets. And so, uh, we would have to very strictly control the square footage that would be allowed for these vendors.
As long as it's, as it's not blocking, uh, the sidewalks, and they allow three-foot width, uh, for, uh, people to pass, they'll be okay.
But it's not going to, it's not going to improve the appearance of our city, is it?
I don't think that was the intent of this legislation.
What's the, uh, what's the, what could happen if we vote this down today?
Well, what we're doing is we're trying to make our code consistent with state law.
Can they just go and impose it whenever they're ready?
Well, we need to get this, uh, the scheme in place, because the next council meeting, I have a public hearing to set the fee for the permit. Uh, on the bright side, we will get revenue from the, the number of permits that are issued.
Boosting the economy.
And also, we don't really know what the effect will be here in Hawthorne. It may, it may be twenty vendors, for all we know.
Wouldn't these, uh, sidewalk vendors be more profitable in nice little beautiful cities like Torrance and Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach? How about that? What are they doing about this?
Um, every city is adopting this right now.
But what are they doing now? Who's about, who's has adopted it before us? I mean.
Most, a lot of cities are required to adopt this in January of twenty nineteen. So I recommend that you adopt it.
Get a fruit salad out there for three dollars.
Well, I told you, I, I investigate.
Don't tell me you're like all excited about this, man.
Oh, good tamales, come on.
Yeah, you know.
Oh, good tama.
Look, I'm not even gonna joke around about this. This is like, no, this is a.
You know, it might be terrible.
But you know, another, uh, uh, one exception they put on the, on the bill also is that if you, if we have, like I say, a Saturday flea market, the vendors cannot be, cannot be there. So it, it, it was kind of interesting to, to see that. So maybe we should maybe start thinking about a flea market on Saturday, a flea market on Sunday.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Yeah.
Until when can we do this? You know, aside from these, I mean, aside from the jokes, this is state law. So by passing this, you can regulate.
Regulate.
There are measures here in this ordinance that Russell put that limits those things. And also, there is permit regulations. If we don't pass it, they can come. You cannot let them go. But then they are without permits, and they can do whatever they want.
Could, uh, I don't know, it's just like, really, guys? I mean, could we take a little closer look at some of those regulations and give, actively give some feedback on how we can beef them up?
Uh, no, these are just, uh, standard regulations for time, place, and manner. Uh, like I said, you can't, you can't regulate them because you don't like them, because you don't like the way the aesthetics of the city are impacted, or the fact that they may hurt businesses nearby. We have no control over that. But we need to start, we need to start this framework, so we can start regulating them. Code enforcement officers will have the opportunity to actually cite them if they are not complying with our time, place, and manner regulations.
All right, so who was the senator or assembly person who pushed this through?
Uh, I'll look it up and let you know.
And can we make sure that we include that once we, some, we get business owners and residents coming and complaining about this? That we have that name and that telephone number in the district office available, so that they could thank them for this?
Yes, I'll do that.
I mean.
Uh, through the chair. Um, so in terms of time, place, and manner restrictions, um, there's a requirement to maintain sanitary conditions, but we can decide what sanitary conditions are, can't we?
Yes, and we can cite them for like littering, if they're throwing trash, uh, in the area. But they're supposed to have trash receptacles, I think, uh, within a fifteen-foot perimeter of their cart.
Okay, right. So do we all agree we're just gonna monitor this closely and just, uh, we're all in this together?
Through the chair, I have another, I have another comment. Um, one of the things that, that I'm, I'm concerned about, because I do have a concern about businesses, our businesses are awfully quiet. They come, they come here and complain about things they don't like now and then. They don't even, they don't complain that much. But our, our businesses in Hawthorne, they do not do what they should do and go to Sacramento and complain about things that affect them, and that's what they should do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's what they should do.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
And they need to do that in the future.
Maybe the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce can start doing something. Go ahead.
Through the chair, that, that was gonna be my point. I say sometime these miss, these businesses don't know what's going on up there in Sacramento, because we don't have a nice Chamber of Commerce that will advocate for them. But anyway, uh, Russell, my, my question to you is about the health department clearance. Can we, as, as a city, can say, we want clears to be done quarterly, every six months?
What? No, we can only ask about it at the time their application is made. And once the, once the permit is issued, uh, then it's good for twelve months. But they have to display their health permit sticker on the card itself.
Is it revocable during those twelve months, or at their point of renewal for some, whatever reason?
Uh, the city is able to cite them as many as four times per year for any operating violations. Uh, when they receive the fourth violation, then the city may revoke the permit for the remainder term of their permit. And, uh, then we have to issue them another permit. We're not allowed to impose any criminal penalties on them. The only thing that we're allowed to do is i- issue an administrative citation.
Okay, so I'll, so I think we're all in on this together. We're gonna go and monitor the situation. You'll get that information on who that senator is. There's gonna be a frequently added questions sheet as to, to the businesses that you're gonna be handing out, just so they understand where this came from?
Oh, yeah, and we can, as an analogy, maybe writing these letters would be helpful, because the same thing happened about five or six years ago, when Sacramento dictated a relaxation of all city ordinances regarding massage parlors. And at that time, the city had no massage parlors, and we were forced to have some massage parlors. And then after that grand experiment and complaints to Sacramento, uh, Sacramento gave cities back the teeth to limit the number of massage parlors. So maybe the same thing can happen here.
Right, so who wants to make the motion?
I, uh, just wanted to ask a question, go back a little bit about the noise, uh, ordinance. And I was reading that, and I wanted to ask, for example, the people on corners preaching with bullhorns, would that be something that that ordinance would control?
Yes, and also, since we only had the first reading, uh, uh, I'll elaborate on the second reading.
Yeah, yeah, because, okay, that was, I hear them on Prairie speaking from Hawthorne, and it's not, anyway, yeah.
And because that ordinance, uh, contains a objective measurement, uh, it will give the police and the code enforcement officers an objective basis in which to issue a citation.
We have an urgency ordinance and an ordinance, uh, first reading. One of them's like an immediate one, and then the other one's more, a permanent one?
Uh, yes, you already voted, uh, introduced, uh,
Yeah.
the first one, and now today, this is the urgency ordinance.
But, uh,
I make a motion.
But with the caveat that the twenty, the twenty-one seventy-one, number twenty-three is going to be the permanent one.
Uh, urgency ordinance twenty-one seventy-four will be the primary ordinance. And if anybody seeks to challenge the urgency provision of this ordinance, then we'll have twenty-one seventy-one as, uh, as a backup.
So the letter, the letter is gonna be important to inform the business owners. All right, let's just vote, folks. Who's, who's second, even?
Second.
All right, vote, please. I hope nobody passes any low. Okay, thank you.
Vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
All right, good, good. Yeah, guys, that's, I don't know.
There's more coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The marijuana thing's coming.
Yeah, that one's pushing through.
We have to regulate that.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, sir?
As, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, with city council's permission, I would like to take item thirty-two, uh, out of order. Um, this is, um, authority investment report, and ask our city treasurer to explain this item.
So move for the other. Okay, second, on all items except thirty-two.
I haven't mentioned, no, well, I was gonna take this out of order, so can treasurer Patterson can speak.
Yes, so we're.
Do you allow him to speak, or you want me to go other, other items?
Um, yeah, do you have to read each one?
No, I didn't want to read. So then I have all the, uh, items twenty-eight, with the exception of thirty-two and thirty-six, that was already approved.
Yes, so all items with the.
Thirty-five, for your approval.
Okay, all items with the exception of thirty-two and thirty-six. I moved it. I moved, and it's been seconded by councilmember Awat. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. City Treasurer, Dave Patterson, can, uh, you inform us what's going on?
Yeah, item two is just our quarterly investment report, uh, per our investment policy that the council approved. Um, my office, uh, is presenting on a quarterly basis the, uh, status of our investments and the balances. And so a lot of that was covered already by our interim finance director, uh, which kind of dictates, um, where the finances are and, and the type of returns that they're, that they're receiving. So, uh, as we already know, most of our funds are in LEAF, over seven million dollars in LEAF, which is seven point six, which is essentially a cash account, uh, money market account, earning, um, um, earning interest. Uh, and then we have about six point nine million in CDs. Uh, originally, we had about a million dollars in CDs, and last year, um, the council approved the investment of about six million, and invested about five point nine million in additional monies into CDs, and, um, and so it's just, this is a report kind of identifying all that.
So what's our total current investment in, uh, both the CDs and LEAF right now?
It's about fifteen million.
Fifteen million is what, the six point nine plus the seven point six? Yeah, right, pretty much, like fourteen point five or something?
That's correct, yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. What kind of returns do you see? What's the difference in returns from both of those accounts, sir?
So our, our LEAF is a money market account. Those returns change. Um, it's kind of dictated by the, the state. So right now, um, I believe it's paying about two point four percent. And so, um, yeah, that's kind of, kind of changes depending upon the, the, the state of the economy. Uh, the CDs are in a, in a three-year ladder. So some are very short-term, and some are a little bit longer-term. Shorter-term has a little bit shorter interest, or lower interest rate, the longer-term a little bit higher. So their interest rates range from one point five percent to about three percent.
One point five to, to what was the other one? One point five to what?
About three percent.
So the longer, the longer ladder, the, it's broken up in thirds. The longer you have it in there, it's three, shorter term it's one point five, and you spread it out amongst the three levels, right?
That's correct. And one thing that you see is interesting, the money market account is paying about two point four percent, which is higher than our shortest CD, um, which is an indication of what's called an inverted year, yield curve, which means that, um, there's expected to be a downturn in the economy. People have a little more confidence in short-term investments, and it's driving up short-term returns, uh, and starting to compete with long-term returns. So it's something to kind of keep in mind.
So it could be good for us a little bit later, in case things goes bad.
Yeah, I mean, it's good that, yeah, we don't have all our money tied up until long. Yeah, I mean, it's good that, yeah, we don't have all our money tied up into long-term, and we have it kinda broken up.
Alright, thank you so much, sir, appreciate it. I make a motion to accept the investment report?
Second.
Uh, please, please vote.
Good job, thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney, your consent calendar, please.
Uh, yes, I have numbers thirty-eight and thirty-nine for your consideration.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Oh, we're cool, we're okay.
It's not on.
It's Ms. Valentine.
It's okay, we got enough people.
Alright, the vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes, with, uh, Councilmember Valentine absent.
Um, discussion, action items, go ahead, Mr. Tayeda, Councilmember Tayeda.
Alright, we're.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
The male lead.
Yeah, um, you know, when I was on the, uh, on the planning commission, every time that, uh, just about we had a heated discussion, it had to do with parking, and it had to do with, um, not notification. So, uh, one, on one particular, uh, on one particular, um, meeting, it came out that the notification was just to the, to the, uh, to the property owners in an area that there was a lot of, of buildings, and they were not notifying the tenants. And I thought, I, you know, kind of surprised that the intent of the law is notification, and the most important people in the neighborhood are the tenants in that particular neighborhood, and they weren't being notified. So, uh, I brought that up, everybody agreed, and it was my job to come to the city council and bring that to everybody's attention, that we should change that. And, um, so that's what this is about, is to notify the tenants, whether they do, and then, you know, the arguments are always, well, it's hard to get their names, we don't know who the tenants are, and I said, well, just run for office, you'll find out who the tenants are, you know? And, uh, they're out there, the names are not that difficult to find, you could at least go into, uh, occupant, and just use occupant, and just do that. So that's what the, the, uh, the purpose of that is, is, uh, notifying, maybe extending it, and also, because of the high, um, Hispanic population, maybe do the notice in, uh, in, in Spanish. And then the other thing that we kept finding out in the planning commission, that we were constantly telling, uh, business owners how to paint their buildings, you know, because, you know, people would use a bright blue, and, you know, there was a couple of occasions, we made a guy paint his building three times, you know, 'cause, uh, they just kept, uh, uh, painting it the wrong way, and, and so, you know, uh, notifying, uh, the property owners that we actually have a code, you know? And since we've been talking about, a lot about pro- notification, um, you know, uh, it would be a good time to whatever other notification we wanna put out, to do it, you know? But that's what this is about, is to extend the, uh, the,
The range.
the range from three hundred to a thousand. Uh, and usually, whatever the project is, whatever expenses are, they're usually covered by the developer anyway. So, you know, I mean, I breaks my heart that they have to spend a little bit more money, but, you know, it is what it is, and we could make them pay for any additional expense, so that's what that was about.
So, okay, so, so that's, what's the area difference in that? Jesus, let's see, I don't know.
Well, if we, if we have to notify somebody within three hundred feet, okay, you take the average house, has a fifty-foot or a forty-foot frontage, so you're talking about notifying, you know, what, six houses? That's three hundred feet, six, seven houses, where, you know, some of these projects have to do with, you know, change the traffic in the, in the neighborhood. Uh, create, if you're building a hotel, that's going to create a lot more traffic, there's kids walking up and down the streets, they're going to school, so a lot of the parents are affected by that, and they don't even know that, uh, they don't get notified, you know, they don't get notified, and so, um.
But, um, so, let's, I'm not, no, I think we just, we just need to understand what the area difference is right here.
Can I ask a question before you calculate the area?
It's too bullocks.
It's a ten.
It's less than two block radius.
It's ten-time notification, two hundred eighty-two thousands, the, the, the area is about two hundred eighty-two thousand, uh, thousand six hundred square feet. If by this increase, it's three million one hundred and forty thousand square feet, so it's a ten-times increase?
Yeah, that sounds like a lot.
No, well, I'm just saying, the whole point is that it's over a magnitude of ten times the notification of the, that you're gonna be required to do, so they need to be prepared to spend that money, the developers.
Yeah.
They really want it that bad, they gotta do it.
Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, it's just an attempt to let the people know, hey, listen, they're gonna build a big hotel. You gotta, anything you wanna let us know, come over and tell us, you know?
I did the calculation right, Arnie?
Yeah, that's what you said, it's two-block radius or?
Well, ten-times, yeah.
So it is, uh, about three million.
Yeah, and it's not gonna come up that often. It's gonna come up every now and then, because I tell you, in the planning commission, we spend a lot of time just telling you how to paint your building. And that's what was coming up more and more and more. So, uh, a notification that we have codes, and we have color palettes, uh, wouldn't be a bad idea to send out to, uh, all the people on Inglewood Avenue, Imperial Prairie, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, that was one.
Councilmember Montero.
Let me ask a policy question.
Discussion on this.
To, yeah, to, uh, forty-one, to Russell. Um, do we have to have like a public hearing for, before we amend this?
Uh, this, uh, you're gonna be directing the planning, uh, commission to do this amendment. They're gonna have a public hearing, then it's gonna come back to the city council, and they're gonna have a second public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Question?
Uh, my question was, why did you want to, um, notify the tenants?
Because they are people that are affected by whatever's happening in their neighborhood. The owners see that, the, the, some neighborhoods have a lot of apartment buildings. Uh, a lot of those apartment buildings, the owner lives in PV, the property's being managed by Jenkins Property Management. The owner doesn't know what's going on in the neighborhood, could care less. The only people that actually care what's going on in the neighborhood is the tenant that has three kids going to St. Joseph's School, walking all around the neighborhood. So that's why I think the tenant, it's important to notify them that there's something going on, so they can come over here and join the rest of the people, and say, I love it, what they're doing, or please put some speed bumps on the street, so cars will, uh, one, one of, one of the big, uh, discussions was this hotel and how the buses, those little, uh, mini buses, whether they come from this street or from that street, or which way that, you know, to, to.
The shuttles?
minimize the traffic. So, you know, planning commission has to come up with some ideas on how to keep traffic down or safety when you're having, you increase, uh, a, a, a traffic flow in a particular area. So I think that, you know, that particular area, which wa- was north Hawthorne, there's a lot of apartment buildings over there. And so, you know, there's a lot of tenants, and, you know, frankly, a lot of them are not that good in English. So that's what the, that was about. And, and then again, you know, we look at what's the intent of the law? Well, the intent of the law is to notify, uh, uh, people. So, uh, you know, I heard that it was the, um, that we were doing the minimum that the state required. Oh, okay, we're doing the minimum, but that's not really doing the job, the minimum, you know? That's what, that's what.
Order in the audience, order in the audience, please.
You know, that's the name of that tune.
Are we willing, I think we're on board with this, do we have like a, a consensus, let's just vote for the sake of voting?
Okay.
Okay, um, I make a motion to accept these, uh, this recommendation for an amendment. Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Right, so just for clarification, because I, there was some noise in the, in the audience, alright. This is where we discuss items ad nauseam, no matter if we have to be here till twelve midnight, one o'clock. We cannot talk about this amongst ourselves outside of this, other than two people, that's a Brown Act violation, so that's what this, uh, council meeting is for, so as I've always reminded, uh, advised, if you wanna go cozy up in your bed with some coffee, some donuts, you can turn the channel on and off, uh, when you get sick and tired of hearing any of us speak longer than we have to, so. But, this is an exception, not the rule of this meeting, right? There's just a lot of stuff that we gotta do. Alright, so let's go, uh, next one, alright.
Uh, next one, forty-two, um, the individual.
I'm gonna say twenty though, by the way.
Okay, um, this one has to do with, uh, more than anything else for the, uh, Veterans Commission. And, um, I wanted to see that they have the ability to receive money in their name, so they don't have to use a third party outside to collect money for them. Um, for example, the, um, the first two years of the planning commission, uh, I, I, a nonprofit that I'm familiar with was collecting money for them to give them the, uh, the, the, paying for the expenses of their events. And so I did that, I did that, it was done for two years, then, uh, that particular, uh, nonprofit didn't wanna do it, so now, uh, uh, basically, one associated with the, uh, with the, um, Chamber of Commerce is receiving the money, and it, it, the, the Veteran Commission should have the ability to walk up to, uh, anybody, uh, the, Edison, some of these.
Gotcha.
partners in the community, and solicit a donation for whatever programs they're doing.
I wanna ask Felice, uh, because Arnie stepped out, that's why I brought her up, I mean, if you were here, I'd ask him directly. Uh, Felice, is there a way that we can collect money for the different, like, organization, like, say, organizations, the Veterans Commission, the Youth Commission? They're say, raising money for their event, maybe her, her event, her event. Do we, can we, is there some way we can like create accounts?
Uh, we'd have to come up with a, a program, so that everyone does it the same way. Uh, we don't currently have a way to do it, but we can come up with, um, maybe setting up a specific line item for each of the different organizations that were approved by council first.
Well, I'd just like to limit it to the commissions, because they have their own events, and maybe with one, like, one of our council members keys, a signature event that we've kind of, that has a track record of existence, not just somebody comes up with an idea for an event, and all of a sudden wants an account.
Right.
This thing's been going on for three, four years.
Four years.
Four years, it's been long-term, it needs that, you know, it's, uh, tested a provenance medal in success, and like the commissions, like we said.
We just have to come up with one, one, um, format, so that everyone can, can.
Just so that we can avoid it being run away with all these other organizations trying to use us for stuff.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, sir, what do you think?
But, I believe the question you have to ask is the fact that Edison or other business out there, when they wanna give donation to somebody, like the, a commission or to another, they want that the tax ID number. They, so most of these business, for, for them to give money to somebody or a organization, you have to have a tax ID number or a nonprofit status to receive money, so it's complicated, 'cause I know what Mike is talking about, because, you know, I had received monies from some other commission, like this, the, the seniors and so, and then give them cash from my nonprofit, because I have a federal ID number, a nonprofit, you know, five oh one C three. So that's the question that most of these companies, like gas, the gas company, Edison, Ally, they will ask for that, uh, for, because you have to do that form, what do you call it, nine?
Nine, W nine.
The W nine.
W nine, you have to do that, you have to present with tax ID number.
And if that's the case, then it would have to be the city's.
Exactly, so that is what you would have to come up with, a program that will have a specific tax ID number to go to all the commissioners. Uh, the, the, you know, different commissioners, you know, the veterans, the, the seniors, or the youth, or the business. Because it's the agencies the one who request for that W two nine, W nine to be filled up with a tax ID number.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
There are organizations, to your point, Councilman, uh, there are, there are organizations that will give, and there are those that won't give. So, we've had, with the Hawthorne Business Expo, we've had organizations that gave to that event, even though they, they knew they could not get a tax deduction. But on the other hand, we did not get money from others who, who were looking for a tax deduction, so it works both ways.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not just the tax deduction, it's because the, the company have to report. They don't claim on their tax deduction, but they have to report, they gave money to somebody, because they don't wanna say, oh, I give money to Alex Montero instead of the, say, Monita Gardens Improvement, Inc., right? So that's the difference, that some companies have to list all the charitable contribution that they give every year.
Okay, to the chair, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just referring to the Veteran.
Correct.
Commission, you know, the, which is the one that I'm interested in, and, uh, the, a- all the other things can be tweaked, and you're absolutely right, you take the money from whoever gives you the money. So, you know, that's, that's, uh, the, at the end, is we gotta pay expenses, and we gotta, you, we gotta get the money from someplace. In terms of the veteran, there's a lot of bad actors out there, and so, what happens when you're a veteran uh, organization, or you're doing something for the veterans, you don't want to have, uh, a, a request to make the check payable to a third person that has nothing, a name recognition.
Uh, we've seen that happen before.
Yeah, you, you want, uh, city of Hawthorne, veteran, for the veteran, you know, and you could do that the same for any other thing that the council, uh, has, uh, you know, uh, agreed is a viable, uh, uh, entity, you know, but I, I was just referring for, for, for that.
But once we, once we establish the nonprofit, that's going to be the, the front nonprofit, you know, for the city, then we, that's one organization that's gonna already, you just create different accounts.
Yeah, because it's to create like a city foundation type, right? It's like a, a city foundation that will receive this money that goes to veterans or to seniors. So you have to come up with, with something there, I don't know, you know, if Russell can help you investigate, but can the city create a foundation?
Can one, can one foundation be in place for all, Russ?
Can we create one first place, too?
We actually went through this, I don't know if you remember, probably three and a half years ago, with Chris Brown.
Uh-huh.
Didn't pass. And so what we're doing right now is, this is actually something that, uh, Mayor Protem Valentine had mentioned to me two years ago about this donation policy, and, uh, my research showed that other cities have a similar don- donation policy. It's pretty flexible, this is just the first step to give finance and the auditors a framework in which to receive the donations. However, there's a second step, and the second step is there has to be additional resolutions for the city council to vote which, uh, programs they'll accept donations for. It's not like you're all of a sudden gonna take donations for hundreds of different groups.
No, that's what I was saying, that's what I was saying, just for the, that's why you're saying the commission, limited to the commissions and this one signature event.
Yes.
And that's it.
Yes, but it would be agendized and voted upon, and, because there may be an event that, that comes up that is something of interest to the city council, and they would like to accept donations for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and they.
I'm very concerned about it not becoming something run away, that like, those people we give stipends to, that's a separate thing, man. That's totally separate, we could give it like a dollar to each one if you wanted, but over here it's different.
I, I'm comfortable that, I, I read the language that he put, and they, the, the city's got plenty of, uh, if you leave the money in there too long, they're gonna take it. Okay, so, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, I'm okay with what he's.
Can we move that along then? Can we just move that along and get that done, and?
Uh, yes, there is actually a resolution number eight oh five one, uh, that you can vote on tonight.
Eight oh five one, okay, let's take a look at that.
Forty-two, no.
Yeah, resolution number eighty fifty-one.
Yeah.
So this will actually put this into place, and so we're good, we're there.
Yeah.
And this will be, um, when do we talk about, can you put the interdelineation about it being for the city commissions and her event? Here, right now, at this moment?
Well, there's no need to do that, because you would have to vote on it anyway to put anything on that list.
So we could do that as a follow-up resolution?
Uh, yes.
Alright, so let's just do that for the next one, I would like the, my intention is for the city commissions to raise money, all of them, and, uh, her event.
Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Well, the Parks and Rec, uh, yes, and then there we go, okay, and then that's done, and take, okay, I make the motion, or, or no, go ahead and make the motion.
Uh, I move, uh, passage of resolution eighty fifty-one, um, do I need to read it? Yes.
I second it.
A resolution of the City Council of City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a gift and donation policy for the city.
Who'll take credit for the motion, wanna take credit for the motion?
Yes.
Alright, you wanna do the motion?
Yeah, I don't.
Alright, second right here.
Okay, go ahead.
To say what's his item.
We just want the money.
No, I just, you know, for the, for posterity's sake, go ahead, please vote.
I don't care who gets the credit.
Please vote, folks.
Alright.
Good.
I saw it, we're moving things along.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting, yes?
Okay, um, oh, okay, here's another one. Tayeda, number twenty forty-three.
Alright, basically, you know, as I looked around the, uh, Planning Commission, I mean, the, uh, the Veteran Commission, you know, the meetings were at three thirty in the afternoon. Uh, you know, I'm not thinking of the, uh, the Veteran Commission today, I'm thinking of the Veteran Commission five years from now. And I was under the impression that everybody needed to be a veteran to be on the commission, but I, I was wrong on that. I mean, it didn't specify, cuz I thought that it would be, uh, wise to just let the best people available, uh, be, not necessarily you have to be a veteran. And, you know, how are you gonna grow if, uh, you're gonna have a meeting at three thirty in an afternoon? You know, you're not gonna get the best people in town, or you're not going to get other people that are working that wanna jump in and, and be part of that, uh, of that body. So, um, those, a couple of suggestions changes that they have that at six, like, everyone else, so then you have an opportunity, you have a pool of talent that you might be able to draw from, that you're limiting yourself at three thirty in an afternoon. So that was one of the things, and then, uh, and then, that, that's really basically it. Cuz we, we, we addressed the ability to collect your own money, and now to maybe, uh, uh, you know, grow the, the commission, the pool of, of talent that might wanna join that. Cuz there's a lot of people that are not veterans that have a tremendous passion for helping veterans.
Excellent, so, yeah, I, I mean, I talked to you about this, one, one of the concerns, and I had talked to the individual members of the Veterans Commission, and, you know, um, there's different dynamics that took place in the past couple of years with some of the members, so that's different than what I'm saying, but, um, we just wanna give the opportunity also for those who are currently working and employed to be able to get out of their nine-to-five jobs and be able to attend meetings, too, um, so they could be active, uh, members. So we don't know what the dynamics is gonna look like in, like you said, two, three, four years on the commission, but just want, just wanna make it conducive for those people to participate, too. And that's part of the whole thing. And, uh, I think right now, on the books, it's like a one meeting that's issued for the Veterans Commission, um, that's on the books, but you guys could, or you guys got two? Two, oh, two, two, uh, two a month? Okay, so, um, no, this is just kinda discussion amongst us, but, uh, we'll support this, and if there's any modifications needed for anything. Can we call on her, her for feedback, since this item relates to her? Okay, go ahead. Let's keep the, you know, we're, we're ready to move forward. But if you have something that's gonna help us, please give us some information.
I'm just saying that there are pluses and minuses to this proposal, because part of it is, is you know I'm usually here for these meetings from the beginning, but there are other meetings that are being held that we have to attend that are in the evening. So the reason I was late tonight is because I was at the quarterly town hall meeting up at West L A V A Medical Center. The other part of it is that everybody that is currently on the commission is on various boards or other organizations that all meet in the evening. And so, if our meetings were turned over to an evening meeting, it's fairly likely that we would have a hard time scheduling a meeting that we would even have a quorum at, because we're all at other meetings in the evening. And it would also be a situation where the city staff would have to be here during a time when they not, when they aren't normally. So there are pluses and minuses. Right now, the five commissioners, um, uh, two have current jobs, and they are able to make arrangements with their jobs to meet at three fifteen when we meet. Uh, the other three commissioners are retired and able to meet in the afternoon without a problem, whereas I believe that all of us have evening obligations that would make it problematic to have a meeting at six P M. on a regular basis. What we might do, because we do technically meet twice a month, is we might be able to have a special meeting now and again that would be in the evening, or else, of course, people can reach out to us through the website to bring up any concerns that they have. We're also going to be having a major event on April thirteenth, which is a Saturday, where people would be able to approach us, because we'll all be there for that Saturday event. But, like I said, there are pluses and minuses to shifting into an evening meeting, because it would make some people available who are not during the day, and it would make those of us who are available during the day and are not available during the evening, it would create complications in that department as well. So, up to y'all.
Well, I, uh, I, I, I understand that, and that's why I said that I'm not concerned so much about today's commission, but more the commission in the future. And, um, in order to be able to give yourself a chance to grow and attract more people, uh, you have to look a little further ahead, in that it, it would be more, it would be, it would be better, or you'd have a better chance of, of having a larger pool of people if, if it was something that more people could come and attend after, after work. What, what, at three thirty today, we're just dealing with the current situation that we have. I mean, so if that situation was gonna be, this, you know, here in five years, and that was the only choice we had, then that's how we would operate. But I think that over time, uh, having the, and this is just my opinion, I'm not, you know, it's not, this is just my opinion, that it would be better if you had the ability to have some people that ordinarily cannot be here at three thirty, uh, give them an opportunity by having meetings a little later that, you know, and, and, and work it out. You know, you might lose a one or two people in, in the current, uh, commission, uh, but you might be able to pick up two or three other people. And, uh, and, you know, you turn over until you get it right, you know, that's, uh-
And, and that has been an issue, and I appreciate your bringing up that concern, because we have had openings that it's been challenging to find someone who is qualified and available.
Well, I-
So, we have two new commissioners this year. One of them, um, came to our Veterans Benefit Day last April and was recruited out of that. And the other one came to an event at three sixty for Fourth of July for Independence Day and was recruited out of that. We have had no one else who has applied for any of the open seats.
Well, it, it, it's, uh, it's, it's a growing, uh, process.
Yeah, it is, and that's, and that's why I said, there's pluses and minuses to it, and we leave it to your discretion. Thank you.
Wanna proceed?
Yeah.
I deal strictly with young people, you know, um, and I think that you need to have a mixture.
Okay, make a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion to, to approve that.
Which item?
Uh, item, uh, where we're gonna remove it to six o'clock in the evening.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Vote reflects mayor and city council voting, yes?
Thank you, council. Number forty-four, uh, council member Tayeda.
Oh, man, okay, this was- I shot, uh, all my, uh-
What?
Okay, well, this is, uh, has to do with, uh, a, um-
Architectural. Architectural design.
Architectural design board. Man, there's so many fights at the, uh, Planning Commission, you know, about the quality of construction, or the look of it, or, and, uh, um, some cities have an architectural design board that kinda is a buffer between the developer, the, and, and then the desk at the, at the planning, you know? And oftentimes, and even I've talked to some of the planning, uh, people down there, they said that sometimes they have to be the ones to tell the developer, they're, they're, they're the architect in it, you know, they're supposed to be approving, you know, saying, "Listen, this looks terrible." You know, "This is really garbage, I wish that you would do this, or you would do that." And I think that, uh, if we can somehow develop that, in the long run, it would benefit the planning department. I know that a lot of people don't like regulation, and they don't wanna be told what to do and this and that, but it's not something new, and it's something that some cities have, and, uh, that we should study that and see if we can somehow put together a, uh, architectural board.
Which is separate, um, question, which is separate than the Planning Commission's approval of the project?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, it has no-
Separate, it's not, just because they entered the Architectural Review Board doesn't mean that
Yeah.
They got a blessing or anything like that.
Yeah, no, 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 they have no power. They just, they have the power to, to, uh, to just make recommendations.
They could make, uh, they could put lipstick on the pig.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because then, sometimes, believe me, you get a project and you say, the, and they come and it's a beautiful rendering.
Yeah.
You know? Or the rendering is, you know, you know? So that, that's what that's all about, and then just as, the possibility to study something like that, how we can implement that, you know?
Absolutely, you've been talking about this for a while, and, um, here we are, so, but, what are the steps forward? Um, who are we gonna have try to assemble this? Do you have, like, a structure?
Well, I think that-
Can you get that, can you get something from another city?
Well, I think that we should get the Director of Planning, cuz I've spoken with him a little bit about that, and they even have a, uh, a, a guideline of how to do it, and at least get the conversation started, and, and, and make it happen, you know? Because, uh, sometimes a conversation gets started and it never gets finished, you know? So, um-
So your motion is to direct, to formally direct our Planning Director to give us the structure for-
To come up with a roadmap for having that.
We actually passed this measure a few years ago, okay? So we have a design board resolution that we passed. Uh, directive should be to amend the existing guidelines and bring it back to the city council, because nobody applied. We required architects, there was no architect to come on board.
Okay.
So, so the motion should be to amend the existing measure, uh, so then hopefully we can make it somehow, uh, workable.
Okay.
People can apply.
Okay, so let's move forward, we'd like to, uh, move to amend.
Yeah, I, I make-
I'll second that for you. Moved and seconded it, please vote.
There we go, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Vote reflects mayor and city council voting, yes?
Number forty-five, let's see, like, let's guess who's this item is for. It's not, it's not his, it's yours. Number forty-five, uh, Mayor Proton Valentine.
Thank you, so, we joined BizFed last year. The city joined BizFed because, um, it was my opinion that we needed to ha- be involved in an organization that was supporting the businesses and that would advocate for the businesses, um, and also give us information as to how we could support our own businesses. BizFed is good, I'm not, I'm not quarreling with that, but we have now decided to join L A E D C. So, um, have we already joined, Mr. City Manager?
We are waiting for the invoice to join them.
And we definitely are going to join L A E D C?
Yes, L A E D C in lieu of BizFed.
So, okay, is it your opinion, then, that it would not be necessary to have both of, to join both of them?
Yes, because what they do is parallel, and, and you attended the meeting with, uh, city attorney and myself with L A County E D C representative, who happened to be a resident of Hawthorne.
Yes.
So, uh, in that meeting, we decided to move that agency and see what can they do for us.
Okay, so I'd like to change, I'd like to change my item, then, um, and say, eh, take that off, eliminate this, this, uh, forty-five, can I replace it by saying L A E D C?
Uh, that's a pretty big change, we'll just bring it back. We're not a member of L A E D C yet, so we can bring it back, okay?
Okay, that's fine, so I'll, I'll withdraw forty-five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, forty-five has been withdrawn. Alright, folks, uh, we've gone through the whole agenda. We have a, another special meeting after this. Um, I'm not saying that you have the right to, you know, to give your, uh, official reports, but if anybody'd like to forego, uh, their official reports and minimize it, uh, we won't hold it against you. So, but it's okay, just, let's just try to make this brief so we can get this done. Mr. City Treasurer, David Patterson, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, just wanna thank the community for coming out, participating in the process, letting your voices be heard. Appreciate seeing you guys. And, uh, just, I must say, you know, I'm proud of the, um, results of the investments that, that we've taken advantage of this last year, and, um, how else about it?
We're very happy with what you've done, thank you so much. Um, Deputy City Clerk? Let's see, council member Tayeda?
No, I already, we got enough stuff here. I don't think they wanna hear from me anymore.
I didn't say no, go ahead, no, I'm a bit of a- Council member Montero?
Thank you, mayor. Well, again, I wanna thank the staff, because, uh, when you look at this, uh, agenda, all these ordinance and resolution, it was a tremendous job for them to put all those things together. So thank you, uh, I think the legal department, Arnie, I know you guys have to do all of this. Thank you Finance Department for the, uh, mid-year update, that was great to see that we are on track. I appreciate that very much. And, uh, again, I have to reiterate, I wanna thank Doc Kraus and Arnie to follow, uh, my conversation with, uh, Allied Ways, the Republic, so they came up with a, even a better number than I anticipated. So that was, I was happy to see that. I did attend some of the workshops, you know, at the South Bay City of Council of Government, the, the South Bay Cobb. One of those that we've been going through, uh, through, uh, Ms. Valentine and I, is called the Cabin, uh, the Marowana Policy Workshop, uh, that we've been going to attend, and, you know, all the policy and resolution. So then, Thursday's the last workshop is about ordinance and resolution, because we do have to regulate something, or we're gonna be forced to deal with this regulation, uh, you know, from the state and from the county, so we have to do something about it. Uh, I did attend the West Basin Municipal Water District, uh, learning class, so it was pretty good to learn about, you know, water and conservation. I did, I went around to the North Hawthorne Neighborhood Association, the Holly Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you Chief and Captain, uh, Kaitano for take action immediately of some concern that I emailed to you. I appreciate if you guys take action immediately, so appreciate the result. It was fantastic, thank you very much. Happy Black History Month, happy Valentine's to all of you out there, enjoying Valentine's coming, and happy President's Day on Monday, so have a long weekend, thank you.
That's it. Okay, thank you, sir. Council member Hadarwad?
Thank you, mayor, wanna thank everyone coming out. Uh, wanted to congratulate, um, Council Member Lydia Valentine for a wonderful event. It grows every year, and this year was by far one of the biggest. Wanted to thank Felice for the reports today on our finances, as well as getting the information for my public oversight committees, so thank you very much. Happy Valentine's Day, happy Black History Month, and that is all.
Excellent. Uh, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Okay, thank you, mayor. So, uh, I have a lot of things, but I'm not gonna, in the interest of time, I'm not going to say them all tonight, right now. But I did wanna mention a couple of things. The landscape transformation classes that have been given by the, uh, South Bay Environmental Services Center are really excellent. Um, I, I attended one on January twenty-sixth. There's another one coming up February twenty-third, March twenty-third, April twentieth, and May nineteenth. They're all given at West High School, and, um, they're really excellent. It's turf removal, it tell, it tells you how to change your, your garden into a, um, a, a, a drought tolerant garden, and it gives you all sorts of great information, and even some equipment as to what, what you can do. So I'm going to ask if we can put this announcement on our website so that people can attend this, um, Mr. City Manager. And also, um, there's, we were talking before about decisions that are being made that are affecting our businesses. So the Dynamex decision is a court case that really affects our businesses. It changes the standard by which it's decided whether, um, a, a, a business is employing an independent contractor or an employee. And that's very important in terms of things like, um, uh, uh, salary and, um, the, the, of, of course, if it's an employee, you have to give a salary, you have to give a pension. And a lot of companies use independent contractors instead of, and they call them independent contractors. Well, this decision changes the standard by which you can call your businessperson, your, your employee, your, the person who works for you, an employee or an independent contractor. It's very important, it's, 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 it's a negative decision in terms of the businesses, and the businesses need to know about it. So I'd like to give a directive to our city attorney to draft a, a, a summary of it that we can put on our website so the, so that the businesses understand what they're required to do. Mr. City Ma- Mr. City Attorney, thank you very much. And, um, other than that, I wanna thank, uh, I wanna thank the Finance Department for that. And other than that, I want to thank, I want to thank the Finance Department for that report. I want to thank the City Treasurer for that report, for, for keeping us on track. And I want to, for my Business Expo, I want to thank Mr. Shadbeer for allowing us to borrow the staff, Vaughn Kawana, and Doug Kraus, who gave a great presentation at the Hawthorne Business Expo. So thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protem? Go back, go ahead.
Okay. During the oral communication, I, I mentioned that I'm talking to this company, you know, about smart parking, and I'm trying to see if he's gonna bring us a proposal that I'm gonna talk to Arnie later on, that may be next week, to create like, almost like a pilot project to deal with this parking issue, okay? So there is a lot of ideas out there, so I'm gonna talk to Arnie and, and present that proposal to him to see if something that we want to adapt or not, you know, so, but it has to, is deal with parking. So there is a lot of good thing out there, even, you know, I already start getting some information, you know, for example, from the school district, how many parking space they have, from the churches, from the supermarkets, so something is coming, so be patient out there about parking issues that. I'm, I'm on it, so something will come soon, I hope, then I'll got all your support. Again, I saw, I see that lady sitting right over there, and I know she, last time she complained about rent, you know, have increased like four hundred dollars, so I know that's something issue that is deep in my heart. So I'm not for rent control, but in my talk with the property owners in the spring, I'm going to try to get a pledge from them not to increase the rent no more than five percent a year, okay? So I'm gonna be talking to them and beg them and to try for them to be compassionate about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so a great meeting. Congratulations once more on your, on your Business Expo. Great success. It was packed, it was packed, it was good. It's increasing in, in attendance and in participation every year.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks again, Felice, also for your report, very comprehensive, is very transparent, and just, you answered our questions, and, you know, we, we like where we're at. And once more, City Treasurer, kudos on your report, and what your investment strategy so, but starting to, you know, we're starting to see this stuff like more visibly, so I appreciate you explaining it and touting it. Okay, so thank you once more. So, and then I want to congratulate my colleagues here who's joined the council, Councilmember Tayeda, Councilmember Montero, they're hitting the ground running, so, I mean, I think we have a great dynamic. I think we fine-tuned the dynamic here on this council, and we can honestly say that we got a good working machine. All right, so this meeting, so just, so you guys know, we're gonna have a special meeting agenda. We're gonna wait a couple minutes for them to set up, or what was it?
Uh, they just notified me and said that they don't need the five minutes anymore.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, we're just going to adjourn this meeting.